I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. Are there any walk-ins this evening? No walk-ins. Okay, we're cruising right along. Next is a report of the town administrator.
So a couple things to go over tonight. On the field project, the length of being prepped currently for installation at the back field, the false retention netting system is being installed around the baseball field. The main drain line for the baseball field has been installed and complete. The field anchor system is being prepped for installation on the baseball field. The elevator at the stadium is finished. Pending sign-off, it connects to a permanent power. The power is there, they gotta make all the connections. Electrical runs and foundations to the pedestrian level, light bulbs will be installed soon. We're pricing out the addition of dugouts for both softball and baseball. To do an addition of those, we've got some early prices that are way, way too high, so we're trying to get some new prices on those with the thought that we'll do a change order to install two dugouts on the baseball field and two dugouts on the softball field. The doors and windows have been ordered for the amenities building. Once they're installed, they'll get to work quickly on that, and then when the weather gets nice, they'll finish the paving around the building. The cold snap is good, we actually had trucks working out there today, moving stuff around, so that was a good sign. The plan at this point is for a major push for trucking deliveries over February vacation. They'll try to bring as many of the big trucks as they can where the schools are out, and also finish the installation of the curbing around the outside of the parking lot. And just so people understand, it's the stadium field, the baseball field, and then the softball field in order, they're working their way back to that area. So we are seeing some progress. Hopefully, the weather will stay either cold or warm and dry, and be able to keep moving on the field over there. But we have seen some progress in the last two weeks. The SEAWAY, if you drive by, the contractors put up the fencing around the site. He's taken possession of the site. Abatement will begin on the C Wing this week and next week. It'll take about two to three weeks to do the abatement of the asbestos and other materials. That is under an asbestos abatement contract, so it has to follow all sorts of rules, regulations, and laws about containing all the asbestos. Once that is done, demolition permit will be issued, and the C Wing will be demolished. Not until the C Wing is down will there be a building permit issued for the new senior center. But we are on schedule right now, and the gas company is also on site relocating the gas line, so that's what people are seeing up there right now.
You're still gonna be able to use that entrance, you just have to go to the left, not to the right? Is that to use the gates gym?
The gates gym, you have to go to the left to start. One of the first requirements when they actually start work is they will make a new entrance on the back side, you know where the back entrance is. They'll make that handicap accessible on the back, and then that will become the primary entrance from the back of the building, as opposed to the front of the building. But until that's done, there'll still be access from the front.
You're gonna entrance from the back, through the A Wing to get to the gym?
Yeah. So there's a door right at that back corner that's not currently handicap accessible. So they'll be doing that entrance, putting new doors and making that accessible. That'll become the major entryway to the gym. We'll close off the front. Until that is done, the front won't be made open.
And are you, are they looking into the bathroom on that still?
Trying to get a plum, but it couldn't do it. Yeah. Yeah. So there'll be that bathroom, then there'll be another bathroom as part of the project. There's gonna be two handicap bathrooms in there when it's all done. Water pump has finished flushing the nine zones, and now flushing what's called the high-pressure area, which is basically the west end. We didn't get too far into this, the weather came down, and we can't flush this type of weather. We've also had some breaks and some work in the plant, so we will get back and try to flush that. The goal is, again, to have everything flushed by the start of the spring, and maybe do some additional flushing on some of the areas that we have the biggest problems on. Regional storm meeting has been moved from next week to the end of February. The engineer needed another two weeks to finish modeling some of the flows from Cohasset to Situate to Hull, and then school vacation weekend to me, so we had to put it off to the end of February. We haven't seen anything at this point, which raises a red flag. As I said before, we do think there'll be sufficient capacity to at least take care of most Situate, but probably not mining and the abandoned areas, but at least most Situate areas should be able to handle it all. So that's a good thing. The 25th is the next big date on that now. We received a $154,877.26 storm Riley FEMA reimbursement this past week.
That's a lot.
Congratulations to Nancy and Sean McCarthy, who do most of the work on that and spend unbelievably, he uses months of time on the phone with those. So this is a 75% reimbursement. Part of this is for the water loss on Fourth Cliff. We put in for damage, we lost about $80,000 worth of water when that water may let go, so that money will actually go back to the water enterprise account eventually. And finally, the long-awaited water study is, all intents and purposes, complete. They're just doing some minor edits now. Soon as it's done, we will get it out to you, and that is scheduled to be before you write your next meeting at the start of that.
Frank? Any questions for Jim?
Nope. No.
Nope. How about the, I know they did some more testing on the wind turbine. Do you know when that results are coming back?
I'll check with Al, but it's all done, they just got to put it together now. Done all the testing required by the contracts, and now it's about just putting it all together and putting out a report, so I'll check with Al. It's Al's last project, he's on the same special projects director, so I'll just double-check with Al, see what he thinks.
All right. Thank you, Jim. All right, moving right along. We have a discussion and a vote to accept some donations. Council on Aging, Linda? How are you?
I'm great.
Very good. So what do you got?
So more happy news, besides the senior center itself, of course. So it was a nice surprise to be given this large sum of money. It's a trust. The woman had passed away really a few years ago, I guess. It is still in some probate, but some was freed up, and so, I think you're familiar with Mara McCann. She had known the woman, and this is where she wanted to put her money. We're told actually, once the probate portion, the additional probate portion is complete, there is more that they might like to extend in our direction. But for now, they are interested in having it used this year, and we're interested in what we might need for transportation support, for services, and it just so happened, we are running short. Our expenses in that area have risen greatly all of a sudden to be able to continue to do the out-of-town medical rides that we contract. We're doubling, if not tripling, the cost of those rides. So we already needed to look at something different, or how would we support it, or would we be able to subsidize, or would we have to raise the cost to the rider, to the consumers, seems. So that's one area, and then also, we actually need a new van, so that would be a nice help. And Kathy, the transportation coordinator, Kathy Clarkson, had already looked into a grant that we might be able to get a 20% match if we have money for a van. So in either of those instances, we'd be able to use that money. So Mara couldn't be here after all, she was going to come, and there's an attorney who actually also needs to be formally part of any donations or any paperwork, but she had to go out of town. So just me, but that was a nice interview.
That's great. I mean, it's a huge gift. It's $20,000.
It is.
Like you said, from the trust of Marie Gillis.
So she was a Situate resident, she didn't know a lot of people, and we didn't know her.
I was supposed to ask that.
Yeah. Nice.
Great. It's gonna go to a great cause, so, any comments?
No, but thank you to them.
Motion to accept the donation?
Incredible. Move that the Board of Selectmen accept a donation in the amount of $20,000 from the Marie A. Gillis Trust to the Situate Council on Aging towards the provision of transportation services, purchase of transportation vehicle, or to increase the availability of social service programs by the Situate Senior Center.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Lorraine, can we just write a letter?
Yes, awesome, yeah, to our family.
Thanks.
I'll look into that.
And then I think we have another donation.
This is an annual review, review of all of the memorial benches that were purchased in 2019, and then we sent the present that just attached to Dr. Miller. We have all these memorial bench purchases by residents, who are other people that have residence in Situate. So the total amount was $39,100. That goes for a pink, the bench, the inscriptions, the installations.
Great. So there are, this is gotta be at least the fifth or sixth year doing this, would you say, Lorraine?
It's been a long time since I've done this.
Yeah.
I've been here over six years.
It's a great, great opportunity for someone to, you know, remember somebody. I think a lot of the areas are kinda getting filled now, so I know there's much more restrictions in terms of where you can put them, but...
Yes, becoming before you in the next month or so, just talk about the number of children that are actually...
Yep. So we don't wanna be completely inundated, but I think they're great. I know my wife and I bought one over on Mida Beach, and that's a great place to sit and look at the water, and there's just a ton of them all over town, so, great.
Well, we should make sure that we take into account all the new trails that are opening up, and evaluate maybe a different modification of what would be used out there, because when all the parking lots are done, it's gonna open up some different areas that folks may wanna continue, where they may not exist today, right? So make sure conservation is included with...
Jim, should we probably talk about conservation?
Yeah, just figure out what that is. I'm happy to give Frank a call, too.
That's great.
Well, could I also ask if there are any other things that are public accommodations or something that we, instead of having people buy a bench, that we consider if there are other things they could buy? I mean, we actually, didn't we have people, everyone's gonna laugh at me, the trash barrels? Didn't we have some people actually sponsor the ones down at the lighthouse?
Sean Harris.
Yeah, not in memory.
Stop it.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm not dead.
Yeah, you're right. No, I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to get at, I know.
Dating opportunities.
Sorry about the trash barrel.
The dumpster.
But there just must be some other things that we need.
We can look and see what other towns are doing, too. What's that, Kevin?
What is that?
A plow, yes.
A plow. Sean Harris' plow.
I think it's a good idea, and we should maybe look at surrounding communities and see if anyone else has done anything.
Didn't call us.
Did they call us?
Okay.
Good. Awesome. All right, well, so there's...
Signs, it's all budgeted.
So I think there's 13.
Yeah, this is nice.
And they range from $4,000 to $2,600. And like you said, this is not only the cost of the bench, but the installation of the bench, the engraving of the bench, as well as the maintenance of it, because once you donate it, it's the town's responsibility for opportunities, so...
Right, and upkeep it?
What's that?
I haven't said that, sorry.
No, we just take care of it until...
Yeah, but we don't replace them.
We don't replace them if they break, but...
Shoot them off.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept?
Move to accept 2019 memorial bench donations to the town of Situate that totaled $39,100. Second?
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And does this go to the general fund, or does this go to a gift? There's a gift. All right.
Thanks, Lorraine, for all your work on that.
It's a lot of work.
We have a discussion vote for FEMA seawall revetment improvements.
Good evening.
Hey, guys.
This is an engineering contract for some additional FEMA work that we have, that we can be reimbursed on. We'll also be reimbursed 75% of the value of this contract. Do you want to explain the areas, North Situate, Oceanside?
Sure. Working with FEMA extensively now, coming on five or six years, and North Situate Beach was kinda put on the back burner only because we had permitted the beach nourishment, and said, okay, well, you know, we keep applying for the funding. Well, it's gotten to the point, we're not gonna wait for that funding anymore, and these are pretty easy repairs to make. We own the property, no easements involved, it's easy access. So we started to pull some of these projects out of FEMA's bigger scheme, so that we could actually act on them without needing environmental permits, like some of the other projects are going to Third Cliff and things like that. So this'll address North Situate Beach, the outfall on Oceanside Drive that projects out into the water. The end of that has worn and fallen off, it's still sitting there next to it, but to have that designed and repaired, as well as a design for Seaside Road, we'll need some easements to do that work, but it'll start to get things rolling, and FEMA wants to see us starting to make some of these repairs, rather than asking for extensions, even though some of the extensions are, you know, they're all on them, but through their permitting, are extending deadlines and timelines for us to complete some of the work, and this stuff is relatively simple and straightforward. There was a lot of interest in the specifications. Thirty-four companies reached out, and we received five proposals back. We've selected GZA, both for their high scoring, and as Kevin said, this will be 75% reimbursable. So the $159,000 will come down to $39,000 when we're said and done. GZA, or some of their team listed in the proposal has done work in the past with FEMA. It's getting pretty extensive. They'll have to bill percentages on each of the projects, and FEMA will reimburse that way, as well as delineating what we determine to be damaged. That's what needs to be repaired, nothing outside of that. Unless we feel it's integral to everything working, then we'll put that section in as an add-alternate, and then look at it and say, it's in our best interest, even though we have to pay for it, to complete this section if we identify one that FEMA didn't feel necessary, but, so we may see that happen as these evolve, but, yeah.
Great.
Be nice to get them.
Questions? Kevin, any?
Where, could you define the North Situate breakwater a little bit better for me?
I think it'll run basically the North Situate parameters, so Bailey's Causeway, I believe, south to number 35 Surfside.
All right, so north of kind of where the post office is, like that side?
No, south.
Oh, okay, okay.
Post office, south, I guess would be the way to say that.
The upper section of Glades Road, right off, right off the wall. We were gonna do the beach nourishment with the sand.
Mm-hmm. All right, good, thanks.
And what's the, which access ramp is it? Is it the one at the further south spot where it's closed off?
No, it's off Oceanside Drive. It's one of the outfalls, the water outfall.
It says beach access ramp.
North Situate.
Oh, that's North Situate from Gannett, the very end of Gannett in Glades where they meet.
Those were temporary repairs made.
That's the one that's closed, right?
Yeah, the one with...
They're just, they're just doing the rock. They're doing the rock along that wall. They're gonna be fixing the rock up and...
So it's still not gonna be an access to the ocean there?
Correct. The tides are still shifting and opening that up.
So there's no access there?
Correct.
Just further north, okay. Sean, any?
When, this is engineering, when do you think they'll start construction? Did you just say that?
I'm trying to think of what we put in for a time schedule. We wanted some of these plans done for early spring, only to try to either get out and do it before the residents start to fill the beaches, or we'll end up putting it on hold and possibly do it in the fall. They did have a spring deadline in their proposals.
Any thoughts on that, Sean, or?
Push.
Right, yeah.
If we could.
On the application for grants for the re-nourishment sand, is that, I mean, is that just a, you just keep throwing it in? And when's the next, do you know when the next application?
I'll jump on that one if you want. George?
We had been going after that aggressively. Last time, we did not go after the sand with the dam seawall account. We went for the FEMA reimbursement that MIMO was pushing us towards, and we didn't get that either. So probably the next dam seawall project that we're gonna go after is up off Turner Road, that section of seawall. We were before you about a month ago, and we awarded another contract for that section. I believe they issued Marshfield and I think Duck Spray money for seawall repairs, and we've tried, I think, two or three times for the sand in North Situate.
And remind me, how many years left on the permitting?
There's a 10-year permit, which I believe could be renewed.
And we're into maybe three, four years?
Four years.
Easily.
Easy, yeah, four, maybe even five.
Would doing these repairs make that less urgent, in their view?
I don't, I don't think so.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Any other?
Nope.
Great.
Put a motion?
Okay, yeah, can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for engineer designing, permitting, bidding, and construction inspection services to GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated of Amesbury, Massachusetts for $159,163. Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Just to note, all the bids, most of the bids were pretty close. There weren't too many outliers, and the grading was actually pretty close, too, but GZA was the higher, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
On what do we got? Yeah, no problem.
Do we have to wait till 7:25?
No, it's not, no, it's not public.
Okay. Next is a discussion vote to change an all-alcohol license, DBA from Reynolds Package Store to Green Bush Package and General Store, owner Marty Bach.
Hello?
Marty, how are you?
Marty, good. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming in.
No problem.
So tell us what you want to do.
We're gonna change the name. When my kids got done trying to tell me that we should name them after them, we decided that, that the area of Green Bush and everything that's trying to be incorporated there, and the sense of community and the revitalization that's happening there, we felt that it was not only necessary, it'd be advantageous to us to name it after the area. So we wanted to incorporate more of a general store feel, so we've taken that all into consideration, and the apartments next to us are, I believe, they're called the Villages at Green Bush. So we figured that, and I've just purchased the property, so I don't really know what we're, what is in store going forward, but I am committed to making that property part of the community, so I think this is a good first step in going in that direction. So my kids will be disappointed, but...
That's what we do, we disappoint our kids.
I did, I did, I did.
So they actually own it?
That was part of the fight, right?
Great.
That's really it. That's really what it was, what it was all about. We have a sign being done that will incorporate that, and like I said, we're just trying to continue the progress that we've made and make that store itself into something that the community can be proud of, and be more of a family area and, and less of a typical package store. So that's what we're trying to continue, so, and I think the name will help us with that, so.
Great, well, I think you've already done that. The store looks great, and clearly you bought it, and you own it now, and you're gonna rename it, and I think it goes in well with the area.
Great, thank you.
And the store looks great, and I think it fits in wonderfully, so.
Good.
Any questions for Marty?
No questions, just that, thank you, because it really does speak to the work that everyone's been working in that area about.
Good, I'm glad, I'm happy, my family is all very happy to be part of that, so, it was a long time coming, so...
Did you have some?
No, just much improved, I would say. It's, I go there all the time now, and I used to avoid it.
Right, well, thank you.
So it's really a nice addition.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Done well, thank you.
Thank you. Means a lot to us.
Sean?
No, I just wanted to thank Marty as well, and also Charlie Reynolds. I mean, he did a great job and gave a lot back to the community, hired all local people, and, you know, Charlie brought it, really brought it way up from what it was before that, and Marty's continuing that. It's the amount of hours you have to put in, I applaud you and your family.
Thank you.
And thank you, you certainly are doing exactly what you just said, making that section of Situate a better place. And it's further thing from a package store, there are young children coming and going there all the time, getting their ice creams or whatever, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we, you know, we pride ourselves in, on hiring, I always used to say, hiring adults, but mature people, so that we come in there and it's, everybody will know who you are, hopefully, or most of us will. And that's, you know, that's part of our community feel, and we hope to continue that, so, thank you.
Well, this is really just a technicality.
Right.
We're just changing the name.
Yeah.
You have the license, and you've been operating under it anyways.
Right.
Like, just repeating what everyone said, you do a great job there. Stores, you know, looks great, and great traffic, and we look forward to that whole area becoming more robust, so...
All right. Thank you.
Have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Lee, I would say it wrong.
Leah Maya.
Leah Maya. Girls. Liquor Inc., change of doing business for an all-alcohol package store license and common vic license from Reynolds Package Store to Green Bush Package and General Store.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we have some interviews with board committee applications for shellfish advisory committee. Just one second to get our stuff in order. So if I'm reading this correctly, there are 1, 2, 3, 4 people, possibly?
Four applicants, three to be interviewed this evening. One gentleman was out of town. That's an empty.
Great. So is Scott Conley here? Scott, how are you? Yeah, have a seat.
Good, thank you. How are you?
Later. So tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you wanna join this committee?
Yeah, well, first and foremost, thanks for having me in. The reason, a little bit about me, I've been in Situate for a little over five years, wife and two young boys, living really just down in, down in Mida, down in 151 Arglades Road, where it's sort of like the backyard of where we're, you know, considering being a shellfish pilot. And, you know, I frequent the area a lot, just as you would imagine, outside in the summer, kayaking, boating, fishing, shellfishing, you know, so I have an interest in the area. You know, I've been following developments, you know, and the conversation with, you know, trying to see how, best approach to pilot, and, you know, that both the residents and everyone can be comfortable with, that nothing's gonna be taken away from them, in addressing those concerns, as well as, you know, giving the chance to this pilot to really have some success, and give it a shot, right? You know, so not everyone's, you know, wasting their time. So that's really the, you know, the reason why, why I wanted to join, you know, just if there's any questions there, but just, you know, in the area, like shellfishing, and I wanna see, you know, make this work.
Have you been to any of the meetings?
Yes, so I, the only one, I went to one, I believe it was the last one, and watched the one in early December, I think it was, which was longer than I anticipated, the conversation.
And you don't have an interest in getting a license and doing it yourself?
No, I don't. Recreationally.
Yeah.
That's all, though.
Great. Karen, any questions?[1685.66]
What type of a person do you think would be a good applicant, if you could?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I've thought about that before putting my application in. I think, you know, general curiosity or interest in shellfishing naturally. I also think someone that's going to take both sides, both, okay, what are the concerns? Like, there was a lot of information going around.
Right.
A lot of neighbors approaching me, thinking what I thought about it, hearing what they were thinking about it and saying, you know, something seems a little off here, a little too much friction. It should be something that could be workable, that both sides are happy about. So I think someone that can take in sort of an all-around approach of hearing everyone and making the decision that that's best for the community, really.
Thank you.
Maura?
I don't have a lot of questions. I love, I love all your answers. So I think it's great that you stepped up and I think it's great to have somebody from the neighborhood involved. So hopefully your arm wasn't twisted when you walked there a couple of months ago. But what do you think personally you could bring to the committee aside from the perspective that you have on the, you know, do you have bandwidth to help Susan with any research or?
Yeah.
How active could you be?
Yeah, it's a good question, too. I mean, part of, you know, the suggestion of putting the application in was like, okay, well, what's involved? You know, and is, can I even bring anything to this besides just the locality and locking out my door and, you know, having accessibility? But I think, again, goes back to just the curiosity of it, right? I think everyone here on the board's learned a lot, maybe over the past however many months this came to you on your desk. So I think it's just, you know, kind of reaching out to people, maybe Dennis. You know, they've gone through this. I've seen they've got a pretty robust program there with flyers and recreation blending with commercial. What are they doing? You know, how they put the residents at ease? So I think it's really just, I'm not sure exactly besides just digging into it and having a curiosity that people have done it before. It seems to be pretty positive where it's been. So don't, you know, just try and repeat that.
Thank you.
Karen?
I, the only question I think that hasn't been covered is exactly the time commitment because the next, you know, few months is going to be nitty gritty writing, you know, what's in the application for a license and how do you pick the criteria? So it's, you know, it's kind of the dry stuff. I love that you are on Glades because that's a, that'd be, I think, a big comfort to the residents to have a liaison on the board. Are you, you have little kids at home?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
This is going to be some heavy lifting for a couple of months.
Yeah. I mean, one obvious benefit right now is that I didn't have to help put the kids to bed. So that works. But no, all joking aside, I think...
I wasn't on TV.
I think, you know, all joking aside, I mean, yeah, you know, have kids, a family, job, obviously. But anything like that is time management. You know, I was able to find time to watch, you know, the December 3rd town, you know, committee meeting from 8:00 to 11:00, you know. So you find the time, right? And I think if you want to, you can find it and work the schedule. So, you know, it was talked in the household. It's okay. You know, I think time management comes down to that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me. For using your hand.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah. Really don't have anything else to add, but thank you. I remember you at our last meeting and kind of turned the tables on you and you said, you know, give it some, give it some thought. And like Karen just said, you know, being, having a spokesperson from that neighborhood, you know, is very important. But thank you for stepping up. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah. The only thing I'd repeat is that, you know, we're really trying to look for for people to be on the committee that are open-minded and are looking at it from all views, which clearly you bring that perspective. You know, a couple of people were on the committee and now they want to actually get a license, which has caused vacancies to be there. And now we're really kind of in the tough part of it where we've got to actually put a pilot together. All the other stuff has been kind of conceptual and technical. And now we're like, well, what do we actually want to do to the area and it's going to have an impact? So, you know, so you're aware of that and, you know, if you choose to put 32 acres out there and your neighbors are going to, you know, joking. But, you know, you're going to have to deal with that and you use the area. So I hope we can get a perspective of somebody there, if you're chosen, that uses it and maybe can give input in terms of better places or worse places to put things. But also go into it open-minded that we do want to get some sort of pilot going on out there.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. There's no other questions? Thank you for coming in and we'll...
We have to review the charter this evening, so there may be additional spots, I believe, right? Depending on how that discussion.
Okay. Oh, right, right. Yes.
But we should be voting tonight because they got to kick them.
Move forward.
So we may be voting tonight. If not, it'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. Very good.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Chris, is it you all?
He's withdrawn.
He's not coming in. He had a judge against him. He didn't tell him.
Oh, okay. Is Adam here? Yeah, Adam. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. How are you?
I'm well. So if you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be involved in this committee to start us off?
Certainly. My name's Adam Beazall. I've been a resident in Situate since May of 2012. I have held a recreational shellfishing license every year since then. And generally, I'm one of the lower numbers. I'm not sure exactly how many numbers are given out every year, but generally in the first 10 or 15s. So I love the resource that we have here from the recreational standpoint. And I think that making it a viable commercial fishery would be a great idea. And I'd always love to see the additional diversity of species for potential recreation down the, out in the future. My background is environmental science. I deal with hazardous materials, but I have done some work in water quality issues, which is something that oysters definitely help with. I'm a conservationist and a hunter. I belong to Ducks Unlimited. Ducks Unlimited is big into conserving and recreating wet ones. And aquaculture with oysters is something that they found goes a long way towards increasing water quality in general as a natural bioremediation for problems like low biological oxygen demand and algae and just in general making it, cleaning the water up, making it a better species or a better resource for recreation. You see that in areas of the Chesapeake Bay where the oyster farms have gone in and the water quality's improved markedly. I am a consultant in the Boston area. I don't do a whole lot of traveling outside of the state of the New England region, you know, locally. So I have enough time to, and I have my wife's backing, to take up this kind of volunteer opportunity. And just from the standpoint of having experience with the town of Yarmouth and family property on a salt pond there that is part of their commercial fishery for soft shell clams and cohogs. I've spoken with a lot of commercial fishermen. I've got a fairly good relationship with the Shellfish Constable in Yarmouth. I've just started to meet the regulators in this area. In fact, I often wondered whether or not there actually was one because I could see that there was basically usually myself or maybe one other person out on the clam flats when I was out there. And I'm surprised that it's not more of a asset to the town. And speaking about aquaculture, you know, the economic benefits that that could provide to the town could be fairly sizable in terms of the local business that's generated, the permits and fees that could be generated. I do a lot of bid analysis for contracts for the construction industry associated with my job. So that's something that I would bring that eye to evaluating applicants and looking at it from an economic standpoint as well as a conservationist standpoint and somebody who uses the area for kayaking and water sports. So that's where I come from.
Great. Very good.
Pretty good advantage. Not much left to ask.
Well, I'll start on my right this time. Karen?
I think you checked every box out that I had a question about, so thank you.
Me as well. Other than have you seen, I don't think I've seen yet any of the meetings. Have you seen them on television?
I've been to, I've been to one meeting personally. I am an associate, not an associate, an acquaintance of Jamie. Our kids have gone to the same schools or basketball games. We've talked about it. I know he's leaving. I don't have any interest in any one person's permit or application. I'm not looking to get into the business, but I am interested in it from the standpoint as a conservationist and from the economics of the town.
Okay. Great.
Maura?
Have you looked at the map? Because you said that you clam out there quite a bit and you are familiar with the area.
I'm familiar with the spit area, the clam flats, which is where you do the recreational shellfishing. And I've looked at the map and saw what they were looking at in terms of how they were going to try to orient the different parcels, whether there's going to be five or seven. And, you know, if I were appointed to...
Any thoughts on that?
If I were appointed to the board, I would say that there should be some, you know, very small percentage that each grantee should be looking to divert into creating a natural growing resource as opposed to just a farm resource of the seed or the spawn, whether that's seeding areas farther up the channel in the actual marshlands where they could establish a native population as opposed to just having that. The idea of holding two parcels for Cohasset residents, I don't, I mean, that's very neighborly, but I don't see it being necessary. In fact, I would say, well, you know what? If you're going to do that, then there should be one parcel that could be community garden type thing. And anybody in Situate who had a license, maybe could go out and put their one bag of 500 seed, you know, out to do that. I mean, the aquaculture growing operation, if you take a bag of 500 seed of oysters, it's going to be one-eighth the size of this table, maybe one-tenth. If you were to use a float operation for just carrying, again, those 500 seed that start off the size of your thumb and then within two years or to the point where they are actually harvestable, if you said, ah, well, you know what? We've got a, just for, just to be arbitrary, say that the commercial license is $300 for the license. If we were to do a recreational license, to say you could have one float and it wouldn't actually be a float because you'd be pinning it to the bottom the same way that the commercial guys would do. And then say, you know, you've got the opportunity in this one parcel to go out and wait out on low tide, put your, set your gear, have your spawn. You'd be under the same kind of restrictions to get disease-free spawn, but you could make that something that would allow residents to enjoy their fruits of the sea, too. That would be my, one of the ideas that I would bring to the committee. But I understand that we're well down the process, so that's... But if there aren't enough qualified applicants, then why not hold one in the pocket for the town and keep that as something that you would do? The other thing I would say is, again, maybe 1%. If you're, if you're giving a one-acre parcel grant and they're talking about putting 500,000 seed of oysters into that, call it 1%. Put, you know, 500 out in the, out in the actual tidal marsh where they could grow, you know, just attached to the native grasses. And that would go even farther to contributing to higher water quality.
Interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen?
I like the forward thinking. I mean, I know we're still stuck in the weeds here in terms of the pilot, but I like the idea that it could be bigger without being farmers, you know, that your average person who would be interested could participate.
Again, it's...
That's a very attractive idea.
It's something that you want to make sure that there, you know, requirements. So like, we're trying to get the buy-in to be somebody who's going to have an economically viable farm.
Right.
So you don't want to just, you know, toss that all away and make, you know, make it to be a problem for the farmer. But again, if it's, if it comes down to having Situate people applying for or, you know, holding two in your pocket for Cohasset, I'm not sure that we actually need to do that, but it's very neighborly.
Great.
Thank you.
Again, you heard before, you know, we're looking for kind of open-minded from both sides of the thing, looking at both sides of the issue in terms of recreational space and harvesting space and, you know, get the pilot up and going and make it successful. So thank you for all your input and we'll decide either tonight or at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
And we have one more applicant to see tonight. Paula Lynn?
Bruce, I don't embarrass you.
Good evening.
Paula, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Good.
So we'll start out the same way. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to do this.
Sure. So I've lived in Situate for 50-plus years. And I've, there's really probably three reasons I'd like to be on the committee. I've actually started a business on my own, not shellfishing by any means, but a business and started at zero and worked hard to grow it. And I'd really like to see, I think these, the business of the farming and the oystering, especially in Situate, is a very new venture for people that we don't know how it will go. But I really would like to be a part of seeing the success of the farms. I've clammed for 30 years in Situate. I've started digging sea clams down in Minnit, out at the, go out to the spit digging clam, so I've enjoyed that. And I have, I've gone to two meetings and I really like the committee. I like the people. I've served on committees, not any in a town capacity, but I've been the president of the Situate Rotary Club. I've served on the Chamber of Commerce. So I understand the protocol of committees and how it works and listening to members and giving my opinion, but also the protocol and the order of how to act on a committee. And I just have the time at this point. I don't serve on any committees right now. I did, I've done a lot of business networking, things like that. But when this appointment opportunity came up, I decided that I would give 100% just to this. I have nothing else. I don't have a lot of family commitments at this point in my career. So I think I can give 100% or even more as a member.
Great. Have you been to any of the meetings or seen?
Yes, I've been to the last two meetings.
Okay.
Yes.
What'd you think?
The first meeting was more of a learning experience where they showed the map of where the farms would be. And so I basically just sat back and listened. I think that's important, that you just listen and not really... It takes time to form an opinion and learn everything. And then the second meeting was a little more exciting and there was a lot of, a lot more information. But I know I've only gone to two meetings, but I think coming in with a fresh perspective, where now the farms are, the pilot program will take place, it's a fresh perspective for me to step in and go forward with the committee, not be looking back at all the controversy and whatnot.
Right. And just the other two applicants mentioned it, you're not looking for a license.
No, I'm not.
You don't, you, you do live, you don't live in that area either, right?
No, I don't. I live on Acorn Street and I actually don't like oysters.
Oh, you don't?
Like every other clam, but not oysters. But don't hold that against me.
Great. Karen, any questions?
No, I like the fact you've got experience working on committees. What about evaluating the applications themselves? Have you done any work like that in terms of, you know, screening applications?
Oh, absolutely. In my business I have, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm curious, you said you've been, I think, clam, shellfishing for a long time here in Situate. What are you hearing from folks that you know out there in the public with regards to this whole project?
I'm hearing both sides of it, obviously. And I try to be neutral and I don't really, you know, I don't give my opinion to a lot of people. I'd rather be close with the committee. It's very 50/50, the way that I'm hearing it. And as I, at this point, because the program has been approved, now it's more trying to have everybody get along and make it work for both sides.
Thank you. I agree.
Karen?
No, I think you answered all the questions I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean?
Well, I have to give you a little credit. You did serve on a committee with Tony and I.
Yes, I did.
And that was to, you know, find, you know, the new police chief, Mike Stewart.
That's correct, yes.
And you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And yes, I have known Paula for a long time. She would be a fantastic candidate. I've known her personally and professionally. And like she just said, she'd go in with a very open mind. She hears what's going on. And probably like myself, when I first heard about it, I didn't think there'd be any opposition at all. I just figured, oh, this is great. And as time went on, that soon changed. So I think she'll go in with an open mind. Perfect candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I mean, she says it's 50/50. It's, unfortunately, it's 50% over here and 50% over here, so.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, we want to get a good group of people together that can look at the pilot and really make it, make it work. And I think, you know, we've got people in the making for that. One thing I did want to do, Sue is in the back, who is the chairman of the committee. Were there any questions, the three candidates are still here, that you thought would be good to ask?
No, I think you covered them all.
Okay. Great. So they've done a great, a ton of work. You'll have to, if you haven't read the bylaws, you know, get caught up on those. And now it's just the nitty-gritty of figuring out what the pilot should look like and giving us some proposals back for that. And then the application procedures after that in terms of evaluating potential licensees and, you know, bringing that information to us. So you guys will be an advisory committee to us. So thank all three of you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. All right. So the next is the budget. Do we, do we want to skip to the revision of the charge?
Up to?
Now? Seeing as Sue, Sue won't have to sit here all?
Yes. Yeah, that might be a good idea.
How long do you think it'll be? I don't think there's much to it.
No, I mean, very simply, it's a five-member committee. I think the work is getting to be a pretty big workload. We also have an issue getting someone from the waterways committee to be on here. So really, there's two major changes. One, go from five to seven members. to be on here, so really, there's two major changes. One, go from five to seven members. To change the Waterways Commission from a Waterways on-at-large member, if the Waterways is not available, so the board could appoint someone, because right now they don't have time or they want to, they want license. Then go from one to two on the number of recreational shellfish permits, and from two to three on the at-large. So we get an at-large and another shellfish, and we take away the dedicated Waterway seat if they can't fill it. So if they can fill it, it's theirs. If they can't, it just doesn't go vacant. Yeah, it's because of at-large that you could appoint.
Did the language say up to seven, or are we-
Shell, it's, well, it's written right now.
It consists of seven.
It consists of seven.
So you want seven?
Yeah.
So just, if Waterways cannot come up with a candidate, that gives us the opportunity to put three on.
Point someone else, right.
All right, but, but a total of three?
Well, under the assumption it'd be four.
All right, okay.
Three at-large plus the Waterway seat.
All right.
Because we'll increase the at-large from two to three.
What do you guys think of that?
I think it's great, because we just heard of three people, and I would have a tough job trying to pick one or two.
I agree.
I think Sue could use the help.
I agree, Sue, yeah.
We're struggling to get a quorum right now.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I think it's great. I just don't know, do we want to say that there has to be seven, or do you-
Yeah, that was a good point. So how many people are, are there right now? Four?
We have five voting members.
I'm just saying, I don't want to say-
I'm sorry, five?
Five voting members and then non-voting liaisons.
And the Waterways is a voting member, right?
They're a voting member right now.
Okay, so right now you only have four people that can vote, because the Waterways person can't, can't-
We only have three, because Jamie, no Waterways person, and so we only have three that can vote currently.
Three that can vote.
So we all have to show up for the housing meeting.
Okay. Well, that'll change tonight. So in order to get to seven, so even with the three candidates that we have now, we can't get up to seven, right? Oh, no, no, because there's, if we had some, how many voting members would there be in the, in the change?
Seven.
Seven voting members and the liaisons.
And the liaisons.
There's two open positions, and now if we go with this, then there'll be a third Waterways member. And how many do we have that are shellfish permit holders now?
We currently have one, Jeff.
Okay.
Let's make it two.
Jeff, Tom, our first shellfish license holder.
So now technically you have one appointment, Jamie's seat, because the other one is the Waterways appointment.
If we don't approve this.
If you don't approve this. Right now as it stands, you have one appointment to make.
Right.
This passes, you'd have-
Two plus the Waterway.
Two more.
Two more.
So it is three plus-
And the Waterway.
Yeah, there's vacant one, and at-large.
What about at-large, though, yeah? Yeah, three total, not four.
Yeah, three, right. And then potentially four, if the Waterways came back and said, we don't have anybody, then you'd have another one.
They already did. They came back already, so we don't have anyone.
So you have potentially four appointments, right.
And I think all three that came tonight are, you're all recre, are they all shellfish permit holders?
I should have been wrong.
Two are, okay.
And then the one that's going to come to the next meeting.
But that has nothing to do with if we put them on or not. They're just, they're just-
No, they could apply at large.
They're ho, well, no, but they're holders of shellfish licenses, and the reason we-
You have to have two.
Yeah, we were-
You're changing, you're changing. It doesn't say you can't have more than two, but two of them have to have shellfish licenses.
All right, right.
I like Laura's idea of getting up to seven.
Or just change it up to seven.
How do you know what the quorum is, then?
Well, well, what if you can't have seven, if you can, we can only get five?
Well, if, if you make these changes, you have six ready to go, if you appoint all three people that have applied.
All right.
So you're up to six right off the bat, and then you have a fourth, that gives you your seven.
Well, and you can have a seven-member committee and have a vacancy for a while.
If you say up to, what's the quorum?
Well, right, but I'm just saying that we do have committees that don't have-
Five, is it three, is it four, what's-
I get it.
Isn't that just the majority of the sitting members?
I get it.
Usually there's an appendage where people call me smart, but that's, don't do that at a meeting.
Shaun, any thoughts? I'm so confused now. You guys just make it worse.
Thank you.
I thought it was all set. I'm ready to just make a motion, and, all right, and then we can move on and take care of this business.
Can I just point a clarification? Sorry, don't mean to belabor this, but we are, we identify on some of the lines who are voting members and not on all of the lines. So what is an ex, what's the difference between an ex officio voting member and an actual voting member?
The shellfish constable doesn't have to be appointed every year. More of the shellfish constable is-
Oh, it just means, okay, okay, okay.
The other voting member.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My view, the next six to nine months is going to be serious heavy lifting, and, you know, we could, I think we can, once things are up and running, maybe we can look at reducing the number, but there's certainly enough really talented people that want to help, that I would be comfortable saying a seven voting member board right now. We know, we, we know we have very qualified people interested, unlike sometimes when we have a big board.
Yes, I think we all agree on that. Okay, so just looking at it, it's a little easier. So of the seven people, there would be one from Waterways, if they're available, otherwise it'd be at-large, two recreational permitted, shellfish people, and then three at-large, and then the constable would be the seven voting people.
Right.
And right, right now we have Waterways that can't do it, we have, how many currently, there's three current, are any of them shellfish?
Yes, Jeff, Tom, and we have one-
Jeff, so we have one of those two, and then of the at-large, we have two? You and who else?
Me and Jamie, and then you have your constable.
Just one.
So Jamie's gone, so there's only one of the at-large, so there's two of those, and the constable with the other, okay. Great. All right, any opposition to, to this?
Motion? Worse than chess.
Okay. Yes, can I have a motion?
Move to the board of selectmen, vote to approve the self, the shellfish advisory committee charge revision as written to increase to seven members.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you guys want time to think about appointing these people, or do you just want to go right into it?
Nope.
So, can I have a-
Susan wants us to wait another couple weeks.
I think we have some great candidates, a lot of debate that needs to take place.
So let's, let's have a motion, so we need, we have three at-large spots available, because Waterways is not, and we have one shellfish permit person available. So let's have a motion for the shellfish permit person.
I move to appoint T. Scott Connolly.
He doesn't, he's the only one without it.
Oh, I thought he was, no, he has a shellfish thing.
Oh, you have a shellfish? Oh, I thought, I thought the other two did. She's been doing it for 30 years, illegally?
Uh-oh. Where's the constable?
All three have it. I have one to cover. Whether the shellfish licenses are not, there could still be an at-large person.
Right, but you're just trying to fill the seat.
We understand that, but we're talking about the one that has it.
There's three that have it, that are here.
These guys all have it.
Continue, I didn't think you had it.
Where's the thing that says, move to appoint T. Scott Connolly to the shellfish advisory committee for a term of two years? Is that what we're doing? Or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days?
Actually, let me just type that.
Where is that? Where does that?
Give me a point of three years.
It's way down. For three years.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? You sure you still want to do it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so now for two at-large spots.
Move to appoint Adam Bissell to the shellfish advisory committee for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law and online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
That's three years.
Why, why does it say two?
Because it's a mistake.
Oh, okay. She's Louise.
There you go.
Three years.
We may need to take a break here. You guys are a little uppity.
Second, I mean, whatever.
Take a break?
Just look like idiots.
Do you want to correct that? Three years?
I did.
All right.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not doing the next motion.
Shaun, can you do the last moral service?
Yes.
Move to, move to appoint Paula Lynn to the shellfish advisory committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and the completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's exhausting.
It's unanimous. All right, you've got six members. You can have a meeting.
Go forth. And thank you for all-
So we still have one more spot, for those of you, but we do have an interview next week for another one.
The next meeting, do we?
Next meeting. Goodness.
Lorraine, thank you for putting the word out to the folks out there.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Get it done.
I never thought the DPW budget would be the easiest part of the night.
I'll be saving you a lot.
All right, so we've got to change our books.
I'm objecting. Got the PowerPoint ready?
We could do it.
Okay, so 411 is engineering.
Yep. Do you want to do 410, 411?
I don't see 410 on the list.
410 is just administration.
We did-
Oh, I'm sorry.
410's facilities.
Oh, it's facilities, okay, great.
421.
Do you want to do that first, the whole, do you want to go in that order?
Uh, whichever. How would you, would you like me to read our mission statement, our goals, or how would you want to-
Yeah, why don't you start with the administration and go over that as well?
Okay. So the mission statement for the DPW administration is provide the residents the following services while complying with all state and federal regulations: maintain roads, cemetery parks, playgrounds, deliver fresh potable water, and provide fire protection for residential and commercial properties; dispose of municipal solid waste in a responsible manner while encouraging recycling; manage the collection and treatment of sanitary waste to all connected customers; and manage all infrastructure construction projects going on in town.
How are you doing with all that?
Well, I'd like to say we're doing all right. We're doing pretty well. You know, it's busy, we're, we're keeping up with everything, and it's been a record pace for the past few years, but it's moving along well.
Sure has.
Lot of stuff going on.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
And there are a ton of things going on in town right now, and just wait till the weather changes and something else comes along, so all of your team does an awesome job.
Thank you.
Want to tell us a little bit about the goals?
Sure. One of the biggest things is safety. We have safety as a top priority since the state has mandated that now municipalities are required to follow OSHA standards. That's a goal that we're struggling with. Not struggling with, we're doing a lot more training for our guys, but it's, it's new in getting all the regulations up to speed. That's, that's a struggle, because it's, it's expensive to make that happen. Roadways were improving, quality of public streets. You know, it's tricky. We've been doing our bottom-down roadway management plan, a lot of the work in North Situate. You know, we know there's some roads that need to be addressed, but it's kind of been on hold, because we know we've got a potential sewer project going up there. We don't want to pave any roads and then rip them up two years later. Sewer, we've been working to create additional capacity by working with INI. We have the Cedar Point project. We were out there boring, we had borings out there a week and a half ago, and the engineer's moving forward with that project. We're pushing them along as hard as we can to make that happen. Water improvements, you know, we're, you know, Shaun and his team, Mark Cloud, they've been doing a great job with the flushing. I think it's the first time ever, the entire system has been flushed, and they've done all nine areas this year. The only section that they haven't done yet is, as Jim was saying earlier, is the high-service section, which is probably about half of the West End. And the reason we haven't got to that is just, it's been the weather, and we've had some issues at the plant with some different stuff that's going on. So we're hoping to see the results of that this year. You know, there was a fire today, I think, on Lotus Ave, and usually when there's a fire, we have to put out all sorts of brown water alerts for everybody. And I know, at least in our office, and at least from what I heard from the water office, we didn't hear any complaints about anything. So that's, that's a sign of, of good things coming.
Can I interrupt for one second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just a question on the, the West End flushing. Just now that we've had the water survey, and you know how the water system works, given the draw during the middle of the summer, how does, does that, does that impact, like, if, let's say you didn't get the flushing done on the West End, does that end up affecting down in the harbor where we would normally see it during surge times?
Hopefully not, because there's a check valve from where the pressure system is, so it wouldn't recontaminate, unless the valve blew or something like that.
Am I correct on that, Shaun, or you can correct me?
Basically, it's all closed.
It's its own little thing.
It's all into it, but it turns.
That's great.
You know, one of the members of the advisory board unfortunately lives at the very end of that system, and, and, you know, we were talking to her about it, Mark went out there the next day, and she's like, she's at the very end of the system. So we're, you know, we're pushing to get that done. We want to do the whole entire area. We've been real lucky this year, weather-wise, we got pretty far in the flushing, and we hit it really aggressively. And it takes, it takes a lot of time doing the flushing, and they've done a great job with it. Real fantastic job. We had a couple issues this weekend, but they were mostly private services that have been breaking. We've been getting a lot of breaks. There was a break at St. Mary's today, that was on the, on the private section. There was also a break off Old Oak and Bucket, but that was on a private section of roadway. It was their service, and we had one other, but a lot of them have been private services recently. But that happens with the cold weather.
Great.
So as we said, we will have the water study at the next meeting, which I believe is 2/4. We're hoping to have that all squared away. Ty and Bond will be up to speed for that, unless there's some disaster.
Hey Kevin, you know what, I'm going to interrupt you, because all these goals are going to be associated with departments we're going to be talking about in a second.
Yep.
So why don't we just hit them as we go into the department?
That's fine, I think that's what we did last time. That's, I didn't know if you're trying to-
Nope.
-speed it up.
Not at all.
So, go right ahead. No, I think, I think the biggest thing in this budget is we requested some additional funds for our safety and to start bringing some of our policies and procedures up to speed, and, and you'll see, that was, that was cut. You know, we're going to work with Meyer the best, Meyer, which is our insurance company, the best we can, and see what we can get from them. Obviously, we wanted, you know, we want to do as much as possible to get everything in line with safety.
Is that what the special agency supplies are?
Yep, and I think the only other thing is there was some shuffling of payroll with our office manager. Some of her payroll got switched into this budget, just the entire-
Between engineering and DPW administrations, we just turn one of them.
All in admin now?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Great, and then the special agency supplies, you were, I think that's what Shaun was asking?
Yes, yep, we were asking for additional funds for safety.
Okay.
But you didn't get them?
Nope, no.
No, he was looking for $10,000, $20,000 in each department across all the departments. A lot of that we're going to try to get through Meyer, our insurance company, for nothing, so I wouldn't characterize it as safety. I would characterize it as training and things like that, as opposed to safety.
Right.
But I think in the end it was well over $100,000. He was looking for it across all for across all the departments. So we're going to get as much as we can from Meyer. And then if we have some money, we can throw it at this special time meeting to do something. We'll do that.
You mean as much training as you can from Meyer?
Meyer's doing a lot of uh, training and other stuff to help with OSHA compliance because let's face it, if we screw it up, they pay for it.
Right.
So they're doing a lot of work in helping people become OSHA compliant or to make sure you're OSHA compliant. So we're going to hit them up as much as we can.
Any other questions on the numbers here? Just a quick, actuals were 150 in 19. The budget for last year was 145. The budget for this year is 194, and that is predominantly because a position moved from engineering, did you say?
Yep.
To this, so it's.
Half a position moved over. Yep.
Great. Okay, why don't we move on to highway?
Do you want to go back to engineering, 411?
Sure, engineering. Paul will do mics up. We'll do highway first. Okay. Mike, how are you? Got a lot of free time on your hands now, huh? Alright, tell us, tell us about the highway and what, what you're hoping to accomplish this year.
What we're looking to accomplish, um, we've got three different roads. We've got Manlot Road. It's, that's going to be dependent upon the sewerage in North Citewatt. Whether that's coming up, that area now, we got to, we got to figure that out before we look at that underway. We also have a se- uh, section from First Ave to most of the Hall of Oceanside Drive. And um, money, there's a smaller um, road, Briarwood Road, that's um, causing us a little problems that we would like to take care of that too if we have the money to do it.
Which we do. So these are, these are three areas that you want to repave?
Yes.
So two of them are potential sewer projects, right?
One of, one of.
And Manlot?
Manlot is, is the potential. Oceanside Drive, we do have sewer that's in place. We've already gone over with Will. A lot of that can be through, um, in situ. Pipe cleaning and lining is a, and spot repairs in different areas.
That's not the area right adjacent to Cedar Point?
It's.
Or is it further down the road?
Further down the road. So there's different means to do that. That's a, that's a really big pipe. It's not like a twelve inch pipe.
Twenty-six.
It's a twenty-six inch pipe. So there's some different methods we could use to try to work on that.
From where to where? Just, Oceanside at the bottom of Sixth and Seventh Ave is like a.
We weren't going to do that area. We want to save that for, for the future.
Nice.
Would look really good when we fix it. No, that's, that's not a area. It is bad.
Alright, so the sewer, like to Tony's point, so the sewer's not going to go in that, the replacement's not going to go right there?
So, no, the sewer replacement won't go there. The sewer replacement ends at Turner. On the Turner side. It doesn't go all the way down that far. So, our idea is to rebuild that road and get Oceanside Drive in good shape.
Okay. At the same height, same grade, you won't raise it, you won't, obviously you wouldn't lower it.
Yeah, we're talking about, I mean, I'd like to maybe even raise it a little bit, but we'll, we'll make some calls in the field when we look at it. Um, you know, Mike has to really take a look at that because we don't want to impact people's driveways.
Right.
And um, you know, I'd almost love to raise maybe some of Sixth or Seventh in that area, those roads too.
Right, if you could.
We got to look at it. We don't want to impact people's driveways and pin, pin water in there too.
Right. Okay.
Chair, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Does Manlot, both sides of 3A, Mike, or just the, where we did the water line?
Right now, we just, where we did the water line down that one side.
Can we squeeze in a little bit for that little corner where the wa- we just switched the hydrant and, that's a tough corner.
That is a tough corner. So, we can do some, we can do some patching up there, pretty heavy patching up there, so.
Thanks, sorry.
Yes. Um, has the engineering been completed for the second half of the countryway sidewalk? Do we have designs for that?
Yes.
So, is it a matter of now just getting funding for it to get it completed?
We've been going after complete streets for funding for that.
Well, the, the neighbors brought an application to CPC. And depending on what the DPW's, you know, capacity timeline is, um, money is potentially available there. And since we actually included the sidewalks in the open space and recreation plan, it should be eligible, unlike the Norwell situation, for CPC funding. So, um, you know.
If you get us the money, we'll build it.
The CPC has the application. They're actually hoping that DPW will step in and say, it's our project and it's, it's on our radar screen and it's up to you guys to figure out, you know, when it's best to do it. But I think it would be a shame not to complete that project.
No, we'd love to and maybe our next funding source, we could do Stockford because that's the one that could be continued with design.
There's a lot of uh, push for the countryway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be finished.
Yep.
And it has been engineered. I, I thought in my mind I had seen the whole, you know, scheme, so um, they've got the application. The neighbors brought the application and, uh, Mr. Hart.
Yep.
And I think he'd be really grateful for whatever assistance.
Yeah, we would definitely like, would help out with that, glad.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be excellent. Would love to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, so, um, just looking at the numbers of the budget, there's no new employees here, right? This is, there's a couple vacancies?
One open, forgotten.
Which, the vacancies we've been filling. We're down one person right now. But we have been pretty good getting vacancies filled where, where obviously a lot of people we like to get have CDL licenses. That's why we have the sign up front. We're looking at CDL drivers um, to work in DPW. They can move the bigger trucks and the bigger plows.
Right, so this is all, all these people are the mechanics? It's not just the highway?
Right, you have, you have mechanic, you've got um, the business manager, the secretary in, in there. Uh, she runs the office.
You have everyone, the labor, well, laborers, truck drivers, you got everybody.
Yeah, you've got laborers, truck drivers. You've got everybody there.
Right. So this would be for people that are trimming trees or cleaning drains?
Grounds, grounds for that. This would be the guys that fill the potholes. They just did the one at First Parish, the big one there. They do the drain repairs.
Yeah, catch basin.
You know.
Catch basins, yeah.
Catch basins, rebuild, um, curving repairs, maintain guard rail, you name it. Any hauling with the big trucks.
Great. So just the numbers, the actuals for 19 were a million ninety-one thousand dollars. The um, budget for this year is a million one fifty-nine, and then the recommended, recommended number for next year is one point one six six. So relatively flat. Um, so nothing really sticks out because it's only seven thousand dollars difference, so.
What's the ten thousand in technical services that you put in for?
We had a couple things on the budget. One was, we had safety also.
Oh, so that's, are we going to see that along, along everywhere?
You'll see that along the lines for everybody.
Okay.
And then we also had um, sweeping services. Was that complete? Or was that cut back?
You guys have money for it?
Right. So one of the things, we had on our capital request for a new street sweeper. Um, our street sweeper's in, in rougher shape. It's, street sweep is very expensive. They're probably about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, one of the things we want to do is get a good list that we could sweep the entire town and go through neighborhood section by section and do it with like an Elgin Pelican type sweeper. Um, the sweeper we have now, unfortunately, it breaks down quite a bit. Um, part of the new things that we have with our MS4 permit is that we're supposed to sweep the town twice a year in order to, to maintain everything. Which it almost, if we had a new sweeper, it'd almost put a guy full-time on sweeping the town. So um, this year we went out, or because it wasn't approved in capital, we went um, we added money in the budget to put contractors in. Um, and Mike did an estimate on what it would take with contractors to sweep the whole town twice. There was some, you'll see an increase in that because of that.
Any question?
The sweeping on this budget was for mostly sand and beach areas for the overall.
It was for everything?
The other one was, no, the other one, the public grounds.
Public grounds? Okay, okay.
For the sweeping.
Any other points, Mike? Are you good?
No, I'm good, so.
Any other questions? Alright, then we'll move on to engineering. Okay. Sean, what do you got going on in engineering?
What, what do we not? Kind of like the right-hand, uh, all the other departments. Water, sewer, um, we have our own water projects to undertake as well as CPC projects ended up being carried through the engineering department. We have three underway currently. Hopefully we can close some of those out. But we're also um, looking at the development and the final permitting of the Golden Well Field. Um, they've done some test wells most recently, uh, and they're lining themselves up to perform the pump test by IDP to see what kind of flows. What kind of impacts that's going to have to surrounding areas in the neighborhood, those wells put in a couple weeks ago. We'll be scheduling that this upcoming year. Continue to chase um, grant funding to expand the reservoir for other water improvement projects, sustainability through the tougher times in the season.
Okay, do you have one question?
Sure. So with, just to explain about the grants too, um, the tricky part that we get into, the dam, the reservoir, Turner Road, and the sand project all compete against themselves when, when we do these projects. So when we apply to the Dam Seawall Grant Foundation, if anything, we're going to get one grant. What we've been doing is, we've been looking for the most expensive grant to go for. So we may put the reservoir expansion grant on hold in order to go for new seawall at Oceanside Drive that might be worth three million dollars. Just to keep things rolling. It all, it all comes from the same pool, so you can compete against yourself. And instead of getting a hundred thousand dollars to do additional engineering, we'd rather try to get the three million dollars for a larger seawall project. So, I know people say, oh, we should be doing all three, but what we learned in the last time is they gave us a smaller part of one of the grants and said, well, we gave Citewatt a grant, we're not giving you two, we're giving you one. So we don't want to hurt ourselves in the seawall department on some of that. So if, if that comes up and people ask you.
Great.
It's our money, yeah. No, good point to make because it's making the decision no more difficult with the amount of effort and pursuit of the money, yeah, which project. Uh, we've been assisting the consultant already, like Kevin said, with the gravity sewer at Cedar Point, to keep that moving as well as.
I was just going to ask you, when you're done, what's the status of, where are we on that?
Yeah, they finished the borings last week. Um, so that's what they'll wash there is ground water as well as soil profiles and what they're going to find out there. We did pass on historics, um, but they started drafting a new layout for gravity. So that it is moving along.
Anytime.
They did expect a spring, wish for a spring, we don't put it.
Really?
Yeah.
Great.
We'll keep pushing on. Yeah, it's going to be a lot of that going on this spring. Because we're also working with a, a water consultant for the Phase 4A, um, to do the streets up off the utility, Cedar Wood, as well as, I believe is between eight or twelve two-inch galvanized roadways, no hydrants, and one small service feeding several homes. So that's being prepared as we speak as well, looking for another bit on that too.
Great.
Yeah, so a busy spring.
So the, the only thing I comment on first is, we have so many projects going on in this town, and we've got three engineers, right? So, that's why we often say to projects, and often through CPC, you know, you can do the project, but the town just can't, doesn't have the bandwidth to engineer it out and, and spec it for you. So you got to put that in your project to have some outside people do that. Although many times you do do it, especially on the, the smaller scales type stuff, we'll just do it in-house and not incur the expense. But the amount of work that you guys do for the staffing you have is pretty remarkable. So, um, you know, kudos to you and your department for getting all that stuff done. Because every street project, every sidewalk project, every field project, every anything, there's some sort of engineering that has to go on with it.
All the beach parking lots was, you know, in-house designed, put together up there and they came, you know, they came out really well.
Right.
Permitted and everything else. The guys did a great job. Can't say enough about it.
Great. Um, just looking at the numbers real quick, um, so the budget, the actual in 19 was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Um, last year's budget was five hundred and thirteen, and that had to do with um, the amount of money that went into the roads and seawalls. It was three hundred and eight thousand, dropped down to two hundred thousand. And then this year, it's at four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. About two hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than what you asked for, and the majority of that had to do with you requesting four hundred thousand dollars for seawalls and roads, and the budget just was the same as last year at two hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on engineering? Maura?
Where's the other two hundred? Is that in the capital budget or?
Yeah, there's two hundred for each, for shore and harbors in the capital budget.
Okay.
And how's positions fully funded?
Yes, we made a commitment for four hundred years ago annually, so I just want to make sure it's somewhere.
Well, it's not.
Come on to these guys.
Yeah, I'm sorry Karen, I didn't know we were cut. We're not going to be able to do that sidewalk now.
What?
I'm kidding, because the budget was cut.
Karen, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Not, nope. Alright, thank you, Sean. Where do you want to go now, Maura?
Wherever you'll lead us, Tony.
Alright, we'll do a simple.
So we don't have to kick Mike out?
Yep. That sounds good. We'll do grounds.
I, I made a mistake. Mike kicked me under the table. He put the sweeping under grounds. I thought it was on the highway, so I.
Thanks. You see Mike, you just have to be a little bit more over it and.
Alright, Mike, what are you trying to accomplish this year on grounds?
We just got to work on, we're going to, thank God, we're going to have the fields, you know, up and running and that's going to give us some time to work on some of the other fields and, uh, take some offline hopefully and, um, be able to work on a few fields. We've got a lot of tree work, um, continue some tree work through the winter with the weather stays up pretty well and, uh, continue that. Um, we've got some project as far as guardrails and, and other areas that we, trimming around the guardrails and roadside cutting that we want to get, uh, continue to do this year.
Right. Well, with the amount of staff that you have, you guys do a great job. And I know there's been some turnover there over the last couple of years, which has been hard to deal with as well. But um, you know, I think all of our initiative is really to take all the areas of town and get them touched. I know Jim's talked about getting some temps in here during the summer to help, you know, weed whack those areas that we can't get to as frequently as we want. So we're all supportive of getting more, more hands on deck so you guys can really take care of all the areas that we have in town. Um, and we know it's a ton of work. Um, any questions for?
But you don't have any vacancies at this time, correct?
Public grounds, no.
Public grounds, well, we have a new foreman who took over, Richie Fuller. Um, one of the items we did add in this budget that wasn't funded is, is we wanted to spray the sidewalks. You know, you always get those weeds in the sidewalks. We wanted to hire a contractor to well, spray all the sidewalks in town.
Oh, good.
You know, front street, but it wasn't funded, so we won't, we won't be doing that.
Real bad.
But that's just one of the, it, it just, that was some of the costs of it, so.
Karen?
Just a couple of quick questions. Um, you put as a goal sod the field at Old Gates? And I didn't know where, the problem area, where you were talking about?
Well, at, uh, Old Gates, right behind the, the school there. That gets beat up pretty good. In the middle, uh, gets beat up pretty well, so.
The field itself?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's going to be the JV baseball field, so.
They can get out there, yeah. Same problem out there they have down here. They can't even get on it.
And what? Say that again?
They haven't been able to get up there and do any work on it because it's been too wet.
So that was before he wrote this up. He was trying to maintain the field, but since then it's, it's obviously switched to the JV field, so.
Okay. And then, just on the trimming of trees, just so I understand. So I know that the utility company also goes out there. So these are trees, obviously, that they are not responsible for?
Yeah, that they're not responsible for. It's not, they only will touch anything that's going to bother their wires. They're not going to touch anything that's, if the trees did, those just cut their wires, uh, you know, anything around their wires. They won't touch the, the tree itself if.
If it interferes with the wires, we won't touch it.
We won't get within ten feet of the wire.
And if it doesn't come near the wires, they just say no.
That's what I figured. Thank you for that. That's it.
Sometimes we stretch and say, that tree could reach a wire.
Sean, any?
Nope.
No, Karen?
No, thank you for making the town look beautiful.
Maura?
Nope, not right now. Thanks.
Mike's guys do a great job.
Do a great job, yeah, sorry.
Really, uh, they take pride in the work they do. And, and he's really made some changes. We had a utility truck we had before that we used to use, well, basically just to change light bulbs. His guys have made some modifications to it. We got a rack over it now. And, um, his guys have taken full trees down instead of hiring a contractor and saving, saving a contractor and saving, saving funds for the town in that way. And it's impressive, some of the stuff they've taken on, they've done a lot of good work.
Yeah, we have an extremely talented hire there, Andy Marachi, who's like a master welder, and he put a cage on it, and, I mean, he's just done amazing things, you know, yeah, so.
One thing I will say is, there's great coordination between your department and the schools for their games and for all the rec events that go on in their, their stuff. So you guys are always jumping over the field, the lineup, because it rained, and we've got a soccer game going on this afternoon or two, or this baseball field has to be done. So just the fact that, you know...
Kevin Devon's been a big plus for that, too. He's just been remarkable. I mean, the communication, he's just fantastic, so.
But it's also, it's also the understanding that what's in the best interest for the town and not, you know, putting anything else above it. If they, you realize that there's kids that want to play on this field at three, or they're not going to have a soccer game, you know, you guys go out of your way to make sure you get that done and reorganize your schedule. So I know that's really appreciated by the rec department.
And one of the big things grounds does is just the trash barrels. During the summer, there's two guys full-time on trash barrels every day, and Saturdays and Sundays to just maintain the beaches. And if he's, looks like he's got a lot of people, just figure two guys just full-time doing trash and recycling every day.
And also, we had to pull a couple of barrels this, this winter because we had Egypt Beach, we had, we had down at the town pier, just people putting household trash.
Household trash on, every day, and we pull, we pull those. If there's a barrel that's over and over with household trash, one, our guys do dive into the bags and look for addresses or prescription, anything that we can find to get the addresses. But we do, if we start getting a lot of, you know, household waste out of them, we pull the barrels.
And we do get a lot of complaints of why the barrels aren't there.
In the winter, we get more household waste and different barrels, maybe we don't notice it as much because, you know, because we've cut back on the barrels, but, yeah.
Maura?
I was reading some commentary from the business district. Do we paint the crosswalks every spring?
Yes.
Down in the business district?
Weather permitting. I mean, this one here, we get the late start.
We have problems this year with the weather because of the rain.
All right, so hopefully we'll...
Remember, rain during...
Came in late this year.
Okay.
And we got, we got in late, yeah, Mike called it exactly, we got in late because of that.
Okay.
They took the lead out of the paint. Before, it used to be a lead paint they'd use, and it held up a lot better since it's gone leadless.
Mm-hmm.
You don't get the same durability out of the paint.
So the numbers are, in 2019, actuals are 782,000. Last year's budget was 883,000, and a lot of that had to do with an increase in, saw the line...
Materials.
Seasonal salaries.
There it is, the seasonal salaries, right? We increased that by $50,000. And then this year's budget is $924,000, an increase of about $40,000, which...
Is some of the street sweeping that we talked about.
Yeah, it's the rental stuff.
What's an example of that, Kevin or Mike? Rental equipment's up like 10,000, 10%?
The landscaping chips for the schools, for the playgrounds. We have to keep them up with a special playground chip we get out of New Hampshire that's...
We can't just use our own chips?
No.
No, they have to be treated.
When the town took it over, the schools had significantly underestimated the amount of chips that were necessary to put down, so we had to put some more money in because they never did.
Great. Thank you. All right, the next budget is snow and ice.
Up a dollar.
423.
Up a dollar.
We'll give it its due justice.
So, I'll just talk briefly about snow and ice. We have been out quite a few times with, I know it seems like it's a very mild winter, but we've had a lot of...
It's not over yet.
No, I know, but we've still been out quite a few times with salt fighting ice at night, as well as we were out this past weekend. You've already been out eight times already, treating the whole town for ice, so...
We've brined like eight, six times, I think.
We've brined six times and we've been out treating eight times, so.
Wow.
We're still there. If we get the call at night, we still got to go out.
Right.
Thank you.
So the actuals in 19 were $450,000. This year, we don't know yet, but we budgeted 497, and we're budgeting 497 for next year also. Snow and ice is one of the departments that you can do, and budget the prior year's number.
Can't, we can't budget lower.
Right.
Right. Except look at a storm.
Well, no, if you budget lower and there's a disaster, you may not be eligible for a state relief because you haven't kept up your budget. So you have to at least keep your budget the same, you can't go down alone.
Otherwise everyone would be doing it.
So in two lines, it could be deficit spent on the budget. This is one investment that's...
Do we have year-to-date, Andy?
About 32% intended.
And you know what? Mike's been doing a great job with the snow. You know, people can differ, but believe it or not, we're kind of on the cutting edge in treatment on how we treat with the pre-treating and the molasses that we're adding to the salt and everything else. And the guys have all bought in, I mean, they're, they're doing a great job with it. It's, you know, today we drove down there to look at something else, and there's two guys in the salt shed mixing molasses and salt because we mix it by hand. So it's, it's going well. And I will say, just right up behind Town Hall, we have a citizens sand and salt mix there that people can go and get sand and salt if they need it for their driveways or something to that effect. In the past, people have gone into the salt shed on occasion. I would strongly suggest against that because people have, and then call to complain that their wives are mad because they track molasses in the house doing their driveways and their stairs, so.
Wait, what? That's a double-edged sword.
Because we treat it with molasses, so it's got all that, it's got all the molasses in it. If you did your driveway and your walkway, you'd be tracking it into the house all the time. And it'll, it'll, it smells good, but it'll stain the rugs and everything else.
So there's a pile back here, you said?
We have, there's a sign up, we've got some Jersey barriers set up. Jim tweeted it, two weeks ago we set it up, and it's, you know, people need some, you know, it's there for them.
Right.
My several dozen followers probably saw it.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, if we know there's going to be a big ice event, we might want to just put a blast out to let people know.
Some of those people out there this morning getting some stuff.
That's great.
All right, moving on to the transfer station. This is number 63.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
See you.
Now the snow's on straight times. Now the snow's on straight times. Only snows nights and weekends.
Of course. Lately.
So any, any goals we're trying to achieve at the transfer station this year?
We're going to keep costs down.
Yeah.
Yeah. I tell you, that, being a member of the social recycle network is informative because it gets us together with other local towns, maybe handling the same materials, but handle it a different way. Some are paying more than us, some are paying less than us. They maybe process it by buying pieces of equipment that they have on site and mail it themselves. Sometimes that makes the product more marketable, second-hand, third-hand, so. Continue to at least talk with other towns to see how we need to adjust. There's another article over the weekend about it, once again, on the North Shore. So it's not situate, that's feeling the impact is state-wide, probably nation-wide.
So, just looking at your, all right, so we'll jump into the numbers. For the expense side of things, the actuals in 19 were 1.358, 20, 1.493, and this year actually went down to 1.482, which looks like predominantly because long-term interest in principle, so we must have paid off some asset. Is that right, Nancy, or is that at home?
They're blessed that there's now a debt-free interest.
Oh, good news.
Great, and what is the, so, just looking into the budget. So what about on the revenue side?
Revenue, self-supporting, as I said, to price and to people.
So the revenue from 19 was 1.393 compared to expenses of 1.38, not, no, 1.58, 1.358. And this year, are we tracking at the 1.493 number, Nancy?
It's lagging.
Lagging?
I'm hoping that we pick up, we did raise the sticker price, so the sticker going scale, I should bring in a little $40,000. Since the rates changed for C and D in the winter, it's hard to tell if we're getting a pushback from less tonnage in our, in tax backs or off, but, so.
Okay. So are expenses running on?
Our expenses are running where we expected them to run. Hauling cost is going to be a big, hauling cost is $25,000 higher at this 19, this 20 that it is, this is what we're budgeting. We're just waiting to see when that sells.
From which, Nancy? C and D or MSW?
It's MSW, I believe.
It's not?
It's gone up in the recycling.
The MSW includes it, doesn't it, transportation?
It includes hauling, but it goes up incrementally each year. I think it's up by $3, and if we do...
We haven't gotten the January 2021 rate yet, or I haven't seen the C and S rate in the U.S.
So...
We're not under contract, I'm sorry, we're not under contract for more than a year on that?
We're under contract for several more years from then, but they give us...
Escalation, every year.
Sometimes we have to call them, remind them. It shows up in the bill, but we get it back up.
Oh, all right, okay.
Possibly we don't. Well, of course, they don't forget to raise up.
So we're looking at perhaps a little bit of a deficit this year?
Hopefully not at January, but we'll be able to determine when springtime and work starts.
Okay.
Sean's definitely keeping an eye on it.
And the retained earnings is at 396?
Yes.
And you expect to take a few $64,000 of capital in this year's capital budget? Any questions on transfer?
How's our equipment down there, guys, for compaction and stuff like that?
Well, our equipment's getting older, and that's something that's in the capital plan. We have to do the loader in the, in the backhoe just because the loader has an unseen amount of hours on it because it runs, it runs pretty significantly, especially during the winter. We use it plowing coal parkway and driftway and everything else. So it's coming up in the next year for both those machines. This year, I believe we're doing the pusher, or the puller.
Yad tractor?
Yeah, the yard tractor, yard jockey.
Any questions? Karen, no?
Yep.
Anything to add, Nancy? All right. So next, I didn't think I said next year, it's the revenue for the budget season we're talking about is projected at 1,493, and the expenses are 1,482. Great, all right, well, good luck, and hopefully we won't have to raise any more fees there. All right, moving right along to the sewer.
I have that open, so I've got the sewer next.
So that's the next one, 64. Will, how are you?
Doing good, thank you for having me.
Not much going on in your department, huh?
Yeah. Got a couple of projects. We're looking forward to the summer for sure, bringing together some old capital projects and some new capital projects. We're going to be constructing a new septic receiving station at the plant. Design for that is already underway. We hope to be going to bid for that project in the near future within a month or two tops. Similar project is we're building a vector debris pad or grind pad for debris that we remove using our VACON vehicle. Again, that should be going up to bid within about two months to be constructed in spring and summer. And if approved, we have a clarifier laundling project, another concrete project that we intend to have take place at the same time. So going to be pretty busy as far as concrete work goes at the plant this summer, but we're looking forward to it. These projects are going to bring some meaningful change for us and hopefully cut down our costs moving forward.
How, well, how, make the material drier, is that what, is that what?
Yeah, right now, so for each, each different project has its own advantages. The septic receiving station is probably the biggest project, it's definitely the biggest government project for sure. We're going from right now a manual bar rack, which is basically just a grate with over an inch of separation between the grates. All septic flow just passes through that. As you can imagine, it doesn't really stop much of the undesirable material from just flowing into the tanks. And then the pumps get subject to that wear and tear. All that material really breaks down the pumps. It's not good for systems downstream. So the new receiving station's going to have advanced capabilities to screen these materials out. Along with all these materials is heavy copper-soaked materials, a permit limit that we're now meeting. But that permit limit comes at a cost for chemicals, so the more copper that we can feed out of the waste coming into the plant, the less chemical use we can use hopefully down the road. The device will also, you know, screen and dry out all the, again, undesirables and put them in a bin for us to dispose of separately, as opposed to just being dumped into tanks that are online. Similar with the vector pad, the VACON has to go around for routine maintenance projects. We're supposed to routinely drain tanks and remove the sedimentation at the bottom and then let that dry before we can haul it off for disposal because it's hazardous, so we have to let it turn into a dry material for handling and transportation purposes. Our current dump site is undesirable, it just is poorly sized, it's inconveniently located, and it's, again, poorly sized for what we need to do. I estimate we have about a 10-year backlog on heating projects, so we need a significantly larger space, and this project will achieve that for us. So we're very much looking forward to it to clear that backlog.
So the second project that Will's talking about will allow us to do more self-performing with our own vac truck as opposed to bringing contractors in to do the cleaning and then having them pay to haul that material away in the vector truck and then come back and then take the rest of it out. We could take it, short dump it to our yard, clean the whole pump station, and then let that stuff dry out and dispose of it ourselves is the plan. And that'll, that should be a huge improvement for, for us as well as the, the system of what we're getting in there for actuarial waste.
What's the cost of those projects?
The septic project is about 800,000, plus or minus about 60,000. Probably going to end up being on the plus end if I'm being perfectly honest. One of our local and largest haulers has expressed a desire for us to include a particular type of component or flow monitor in the septic receiving project. About, you may have seen a dip in some of our septic revenues over the last year and a half or so, and that's because that customer started moving his operations to other towns or locations that offered that particular type of device or service.
Well, because of price?
It, it factors into price. So it's a device that measures per gallon how much is being dropped off their truck. Right now, we bill in a pretty crude fashion of what's your truck volume, that's what you're billed for. I hope you filled it. And they're expressing, you know, they're, they're very busy, they're out there all the time, so they, they like the option to not have to bring a full truck to be able to just do one or two jobs and situate, dump locally, then move on to another project and see where that might end up. Most towns do offer flow metering billing for septic dumping. Something that we're still reviewing, but there seems to be a pretty pressing need, especially in this particular company, and it is a significant portion of our revenue. So we're trying to, you know, make sure we're in line with the other septic receiving stations like Morse Fields and the others to make sure we don't get left behind there.
I had a conversation with probably the same person, and they said, and I'm trying to remember, did we go up on just that fee, or did we go up on, did we split the difference? Did we go up just on the outs, you know, the trucks that come in directly and dump, or... did we go up on the, well, did we spread it across, the rate users as well? I forget.
We've had a couple of increases, and the dates have kind of blurred together for me, but I think about a year and a half ago, we increased the septic rate by half a cent.
And I don't think we went up on the septic rate.
Maybe that's, yeah, okay. And that kind of scared them away. And then to the point where you said, you know, they, their truck holds five thousand, and that's what they're going to get billed if they bring in forty-five hundred, so that kind of deterred them from coming in.
Before we had a arguably low rate, now we have an arguably competitive rate. But this other factor is, for the, for a hauler of this volume, it's, it's a notable concern for them. For smaller volume haulers, it's really not an issue, they always bring a full truck. But for the guys that have big fleets, they may not want to bring a full truck every time.
Makes sense. What was the other, was there a third project?
The third project was the clarifier effluent laundercoding. That's a proposed capital project for FY twenty-one. One we'd like to start, you know, in this, in this summer, because we have all this sort of concrete work going on, it makes sense to have additional concrete work happening where we have engineers brought into town. That's going to be, if you're familiar with the circular tanks in the middle of the wastewater plant there, those are the clarifiers. The concrete around the perimeter of them is worn down, I call it popcorn concrete. You can literally, you can run your hand across the concrete surface and chips of it will fall out. The, the rock stump surface is exposed and it's falling out. Those bits of concrete, when they fall into the water, they end up going into a tank and then get into a pump. And the pumps do not appreciate chewing the concrete bits, subjects us to, you know, increased wear and tear of our equipment, which has been a plague across the board for our department, is wear and tear. We're used to fighting the saltwater, but we're not used to fighting the, the concrete our tanks are made out of. So we want to seal that up, prevent the damage downstream, it'll make it a sturdier structure, it'll also prevent.
Like an epoxy coating that goes around the inside, that prevents it from falling apart, and it helps stabilize the concrete. So eventually we'd do it for all three clarifiers, we're doing it to the first one, making sure it works out okay, and then we'd be back again in the future.
Great, now those are in the budget, or those, those aren't in this capital plan, right Nancy?
Two of those were prior approved capital projects, the clarifier one is a proposed capital project.
So are they in the principal, or just interest in?
Well, the septic facility has never been borrowed yet.
Just a little bit.
Just for the engineering.
Yep.
Say that again?
The septic facility, you've only, you've approved an intercom borrowing for ninety-three thousand dollars for the.
But it's not in this budget?
No, not the payback, because we haven't borrowed it out, where we have to make this back yet.
So it would just be interest on a ban initially?
And somebody was mentioning the Cedar Point project, that we're, we're hoping the spring would get that up and going, and then that will certainly help, we're still at ninety-seven plus percent.
As of today, we're, we're about ninety-three, ninety-four percent, still uncomfortably high. And still very dependent on what, what's going on outside. Factors beyond our control, factors beyond residents' control are the biggest factors for our facility. Right now, because it's been so wet for so long, about forty percent of our flow is inflow infiltration. We are continuing projects like Cedar Point to address that. This spring, if approved, we're going to be starting some more studies of the other high priority areas like Oceanside and the rest of them, that were identified in the twenty sixteen study. We're going to take the whole list of all the high priority areas and make a game plan for how to do fix-in-place repairs for that system, or rehab the system. It's going to be difficult, there are going to be a lot of unknowns, they're going to have to be answered during these studies. But I hope by this time next year to have a pretty interesting report on what we would recommend moving forward to address these problems.
Great. And we're hoping that the Cedar Point takes a big.
Helps significantly.
Any questions for Will?
Just, so you, obviously the I I fight goes on, so in this budget, what are the, what, you know, what do we see near term for reducing, besides Cedar Point?
Besides Cedar Point, our, our focus is going to be on following up on those high priority areas. We're often, whenever we find like a low hanging fruit situation, I'm, I'm forgetting the name of the street, but there's a street off of First Parish, we're just doing a routine check, following up on a complaint that we received. Whenever we receive a complaint, we routinely pop open the manhole covers in the surrounding area, just to have a look see, because we're out there already. In this instance, we opened a manhole cover and saw groundwater leaking into the manhole structure from a fissure crack that had formed on the bottom, where the, the floor and the walls had basically separated, and water was gushing in at a pretty extreme rate there. So in that instance, we contacted, in this case, Spray Rock. They came in to a confined space entry, the same type of coating that we're going to do to our clarifiers. They hit all the surface of this manhole, it hardens in real time in the field, and then that was, you know, back in service a couple hours later. No interruptions to the customers in the area.
I'm sorry, you're done? Go on, Ms. Karen. Couple things, so long-range planning, have we identified a potential location, I'm talking, you know, twenty years, thirty years, for a new sewer treatment plant, since it does sit in the flood zone? I mean, I just don't know if we as a town are starting to at least identify a plot of land to reserve, because I know we don't have a lot of land. I don't know if you folks have thought of a locale at all?
We've had ideas, I mean, you know, it, it's going to have to require the entire system to be redone.
I know, but you've got to start thinking about it.
I know, it is, it's something that.
So I just would love to, I think we've got to put it on our radar for long-range planning, or else we're going to get stuck in a situation that's going to be not very pleasant. That was my first question.
At, at some point soon, we will be presenting the findings from our municipal vulnerability preparedness study. We're currently in a transition with, with our planning board at the moment, but we'll be presenting those findings next month. They're going to be announcing the next round of MVP action grants, so we're going to be seeking those grants to fortify locations like Sandvilles, the Peggy Beach Pump Station, First Cliff Pump Station. All of our assets along the coast are, are, were found to be vulnerable, and we need to do some follow-up in those locations.
Okay, awesome. And then in your risks and challenges, point number four, can you explain to me what the increased volumes of industrial waste from local departments means?
Sorry.
Is that, is that you Sean, are you the culprit?
I can, I can jump in.
I just wanted to say like what it is and what we can do to mitigate it at all, if anything.
I can give you a couple answers of what we could do to do, what, what we do is, the way the treatment plant's set up right now is.
Which one?
The water treatment plant, I'm sorry, I have to clarify. The water treatment plant takes the alum sediment that we have, and it sends it to Will. That was the plan when they redid it in ninety-one. So they ship all that sludge to Will. It causes chaos in Will's plant, because the alum, some of his treatment is.
Is that coming through a pipe?
It comes through a pipe, and it's treated with UV light to kill the bacteria and the bugs. So when you have alum, you've, it's like it flashes back in the light, and it won't kill the bugs to the extent that we need. But unfortunately, that's the setup that we have. Obviously, in the future, we would look for a system, you know, that didn't.
To redirect that out of the plant.
To redirect that out the plant, to set it up another way, or, or another way how to handle it. Also, you know, we'll have the backwash from the green sand filters now, will go towards the wastewater treatment plant. That material has to be taken care of one way or the other. So you've got the backwash from wells seventeen and eighteen, that's going to be going to the plant now too.
Well, that's.
And where this hits us is our chemicals budget and electricity budget. On chemicals, we have to use extra amounts of soda ash, which we use for pH and alkalinity control, and we have to use extra amounts of metcler, which is the chemical we use for copper removal. Because the copper removal chemical doesn't discriminate on metals, it prefers copper more than any other metal, but iron, manganese, aluminum, these other metals in the waste streams, it will attack and, you know, bind to those as well. So that increases our consumption for those chemicals. And then electricity, for ramping up the UV system in order to try to compensate. But the UV just, our, our system really isn't designed with the contact time that would be required to see the type of results we want to see. So we can double our, our dosage rate, but we don't really see double the effects when we do that.
So are we mitigating that, looking at the new water treatment plant design?
Yes.
Okay.
We will.
It'll need to be, we will probably be slapped with an aluminum limit in our new permit.
Which is about three years out.
Yep.
Okay.
So we have time, but.
Thanks.
A new permit is on the horizon.
Sean?
In a perfect world, if we were building a new water treatment plant, would we handle that in Sean's facility?
Yes.
That's right, that's, and that's what that pond was out there, but.
We still use the pond too, but.
But limited?
It's extremely limited, yes.
So we have no choice but to send it to Will.
Back, when they did the renovations to the plant, I believe Anthony set it up so that they could pump it and, and use the, the lagoon, we call it, was just used up as a backup in case there was a problem at the plant. But as the water study will show, Tony went to the pre-water meeting, and if anybody had a chance to see it on, on YouTube, which I'll say it's on YouTube channel if anybody wants to see it, they were talking about how, how that is a direct, the more and more usage that we have, and the more reliant we become on old oak and bucket, the more material we generate that goes to him and goes to the lagoon, and it's costing us in multiple areas.
I will note the amount of, of volume that they're sending us is, is miniscule. We're talking like, you know, eight, twelve thousand gallons per day, so it's not affecting capacity in any way, it's just the, the material in it is, is terrible for the plant, for, for my plant.
And it was, it was originally designed, sorry to interrupt, to send it over as we pump it, so it would be hundreds of gallons a minute, hitting them all at once. And then they quickly realized that that couldn't happen, so that's when they put in the underground storage tanks. And we pump it off peak hours at four, somewhere between four and ten gallons per minute, between ten o'clock at night and four o'clock in the morning, to ease the burden on them.
So it trickles in as opposed to just getting a blast?
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Karen, any questions?
No, I just, yeah, yes, I do have a question. So all this construction that will be going on there, will be going on within the confines of the current treatment plant, and neighbors?
Except, obviously, your point, yeah.
Right, but the neighbors shouldn't be disturbed by whatever's going on down there, right?
The neighbors disturb us. This is, okay, I know we're talking budgets, but the funny, like, people complain, the sewer guys will complain to me about the orders from Go Green.
Right, right.
So that's, that's a new record.
Right.
I've never heard that.
That's not good.
It's just, it's, no, nobody should notice anything, anything drastic.
So the, the only thing that I'll add is, clearly being at ninety-four percent of our capacity is an issue that we're all aware of, and we're hoping that Cedar Point takes a big chunk out of that, but we do need to move on to the next project and hit those other high, you know, critical areas that you're, you're identifying now. So we're very interested in seeing what those are. Unfortunately, it's going to, you know, we'll have to figure out how to pay for it, but that has to be a long-term plan of getting those top ten areas down, so that we get that capacity down to a reasonable level.
As a forecast, we're probably looking at, to address our capacity needs, investing another four to ten million in I I projects over the next five to ten years. And, you know, those numbers will change on how aggressive we want to be, or, you know, what the ROI is, to use a term, for a given area. But, you know, we're, we're up against the wall there, so we need to move the needle. Praying for drought, I know that doesn't help my colleague, but drought changes.
You've got to be on the same plane.
My landscape dramatically, it'll be some much needed relief, but, you know, that, that puts more burden to our.
And the funding, you know, the boards in the future will have to figure out whether it's funded through capital plans, or through betterments, or whatever functionality it is, you know, to get this done. But it is a priority, it has to be continued to look at. More?
Do you know, I know we talked that, that Cedar Point's like forty percent of the I and I, do you have sort of an estimate of what you think that will bring the capacity down by?
Well, we, we said forty, the, the report said forty thousand gallons per day.
So is that like ten, ten percent?
We put a flow meter in there, and we were well exceeding the, the flows of forty thousand gallons. Will, wasn't, the flow meter was getting such high rates at some time, it couldn't be?
The majority of the time, that flow meter has a warning on the reading that says warning, water level's too high to be accurate. We're looking at flows in this neighborhood, you know, for a weekend like the one we just had, for probably getting about a hundred eighty to two hundred twenty thousand gallons per day for these hundred thirty-three homes, which is, it's, it's, it's tens of times more than an area like that should be growing.
Especially in the winter, we're happy to.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to chase these leaks, because once we catch one area, the groundwater's going to seek out the next weak point. So we're going to have to chase it all the way down Oceanside, all the way down the coast, until we get to, you know, basically the Egypt Beach parking lot pump station. So we're going to go from the lighthouse all the way out to there, with the severity of the projects decreasing as we get closer to Egypt Beach.
Good, thank you.
Great, so just a quick look at the numbers, the, the budget for nineteen was three point eight five seven, for twenty it was three five eight nine, so it went down. What's the capital going down, what, what happened there? Did I read that right? How did the budget go? Oh, yeah, the capital went down four hundred thousand dollars on principle. And then this year it's at three point six one oh, which is, the capital plan is level, it's going up twenty thousand dollars, and that's probably cost of living increases and, and payroll functionality. So pretty level with last year, up point six percent. The revenue to go with that three point six million dollar expense is, is that right? Two point four eight seven? Oh, down below, so there's a million dollars of betterments. So about three point about three point five million, and I said the budget was three point six, so there'll be about a.
It matches dollar for dollar.
Hundred thousand dollar, is that right, deficit?
No, it doesn't, there isn't a deficit, it matches dollar for dollar.
Matches, exactly, okay. So not a lot of wiggle room. The retained earnings, right now is one point one million dollars, but all the projects that Will just mentioned for this capital plan are about six hundred thousand dollars, so that'll drop to about five hundred thousand dollars in retained earnings. Any questions on the finances? Alright, Will, good job, really, you're doing a great job managing, you know, some tough issues that we have there, and, you know, keep up the good work, it's.
Thank you, and a big thank you to the team up here that supports us, and to the guys out in the field that, quite frankly, have to work with materials that most of us hopefully never have to see, under our mind's touch.
Thanks, Will.
So is, is part of, Will's done a great job with this, and part of our safety program that we're putting out is, we're offering hepatitis shots to all the guys in different departments, it's a safety requirement, and they have the choice of getting it through their own doctors, or through the town, have the town nurse, through the board help, give the shots. It's a three-shot process, it's, they have one shot, another shot three months later, another shot six months later, if I recall correctly, but it's something we're working on, we've been trying to make some pretty good safety improvements.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Glad we get the easy one. The last budget for the evening is the Water Enterprise Fund?
Good evening.
Alright, where do you want to start?
Thanks for having me. Obviously, one of our, one of the key areas that we've been working on has been. Obviously, one of our, one of the key areas that we've been working on has been eliminating the brown water issue that we've had throughout town. One of the positions that was created last year, or this fiscal year, was my assistant position, Mark Cloud. He's done a fantastic job coming on board, really taking the reins for the unidirectional flushing program that was designed by Ty and Bond. At this point, he's done about approximately 80 miles of water main flushing aggressively, very aggressively out there. And had, had some very good results, you know. In the very beginning stages of it, we were getting a lot of complaints, but it was clear that as he progressed and as he started to pull clearer water, as he continued, the complaints got less and less. Where we did bump into complaints is that we would find valves out in the system that were in the closed position. Something I expected we'd find. It's something that's good to remedy. Any closed valve out in the system is just like a dead-end street. You know, you're gonna have poor water quality on either side of that valve, and it's also restricting flow that you would normally have available to different areas of town. So it's making water run faster down another street in order to get to an area that's, you know, using a lot of water because there's a valve closed here.
So in the past, if I can cut you off for one second, the standard operating procedure, if one neighborhood was maybe getting brown water and another one wasn't, and people were complaining, they'd shut one of the gates off so they wouldn't get water from that direction anymore. And nobody knew about it, or at least we didn't know about it. So by doing this whole program, we're opening all the gates and getting the water flowing in the right directions where they're supposed to be. And that's one of the things Mark and Sean have been doing, that's, that's been real, really good.
And there's quite a few, quite a few gates.
Really?
I don't know the exact number, but well over a dozen that he.
And this was all because one community, it was to resolve a brown water issue?
Well, it could have even been a leak, like when we were up on Third Cliff, there was an area there that had a leak and they just shut two gates down and left it. You know, it could have been something like that. They did a repair and never turned the gates back on, so it's, it's some interesting stuff that we've been finding out there. In the, the unidirectional flushing, every gate, I think, in the system is touched, it's turned on and off, and the water's flushed in every direction. So it's an excellent proving for our whole entire system.
Are you tracking that you're opening them all as a blah 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 date?
We're tracking them on the, on the reports that Ty and Bond gave us. They predict how long, you know, they have like a minimum runtime and a maximum runtime. We put the actual runtime and the actual flow rate. And he's been getting a lot of sand out, a lot of rocks out. He's been getting a lot of, a lot of sediment out of the system, so it's been very successful.
Sean?
Sean, is there any idea of changing the water line on Old Driftway? From the bridge or from the intersection of Stark Bridge down on, down to Driftway, the old Driftway?
Actually, I'm talking about that recently.
In front of the Citro concrete pipe, they've had a couple of breaks, right one beside another. And if, if, if I could do it all over again when the M B T A came back into town, you know, where?
I believe at the top of the street, there's a stick of ducted iron, and if we can afford to in the next water main project, I, I would love to get some ducted iron down that road, if not down, you know, the entire road, get it past Citro concrete. I did some investigating after the most recent leak that we had, because that's the second time since I've been here that I've been out there with the guys making a repair right in front of Citro pipe. And it was hard because I had to go into inactive records because the M B T A obviously bought all the properties around there. But I was able to do it, and I was able to find that that, that E C water main is circa late 1920s, early 1930s, so its useful life is, is 20, we're 20 years beyond its useful life.
Right.
And as you know, the operation that they do in there, they're apt to open and close valves very suddenly to mix water to make the concrete, and that creates little, you know, shock waves, and that's not good for old pipes.
But by shutting them off with water, it's, it's pretty bad, you know.
Yeah, no, we agree. We don't, that's the last thing we want to do.
Right.
We dread the call.
Yeah, right, right. Or I get the call.
You get the call, tell us.
So clearly you've got a number of big picture issues. You've got brown water, which I think you've done a great job fighting that with the ice pigging, the flushing, cleaning the storage facilities, that sort of stuff. I'm very interested to see what the spring brings.
Yeah, too.
We are.
And then we've got just water, new water sources, which we're hunting down with Dolan Wells and what have you. And then there's the redundancy of the, of the system itself and upgrading our system. So you've had a lot of huge projects on your plate, and a lot of them, actually, I, I mean, I think Will has some longer-term stuff where I, we can kind of see, you know, the end of the road, not end of the road, but at least your projects come into some sort of stability once we get, you know, they're expensive, but getting a few of these things done will help considerably really stabilize that department, so.
Absolutely, yep.
So we really applaud all the efforts you put into brown water. And I'm really hoping that, that we see the results of that, like I said, in the spring, and, and then we just got to figure out the other stuff expense-wise as we go along, you know, green wa, green sand filters going in. Yeah, it's expensive, and then the plants, another, what was it, $100 million for?
I think the plant was 40 million.
40 million, I think the 100 million was the, the whole 20 year.
Oh, I think it was 100, yeah. Like 110 was the, was the estimate from Ty and Bond to bring the system up.
I will, I, I will, you know, suggest that you guys look at that YouTube video because it's, they, they did a really good job getting a perspective in terms of what our water situation is. And, and we've got to look into some stuff. There's some data that I want to get from you to look at some stuff. But we do have water. You know, water shortage is not the issue. It's, it's extreme, extreme conditions that we're really trying to manage to. And, and they had some really good data and graphs that showed that, so again, Sean, I got to get together with you for a few things that we talked about, but, but it's really interesting, and it gives you the answers that you can ask when people say things that aren't exactly accurate, you can have real information to, to hand out, so.
Good stuff.
Yep. Any questions before the numbers?
Can I just say one thing with, with the capital, and this is unfortunate, Sioux has notified us that they are going to be stopping the ice pigging. They're no longer going to be supplying the ice pigging in the States. It wasn't as profitable as they had hoped, and they're going to be pulling that from North America now.
Is that the company that does it?
Yes. So that's something that we were looking at. We had $200,000 for future ice pigging. What we're doing is requesting that money, we'd gone through Capital Advisory already, requesting that money goes to, towards meters, to the meter replacement, because we'll have a lot of meters going in the following year, which is a revenue generating service. So that, that's just one of the things. It was, it was very disappointing for us that we, we are losing that. You know, for some of these larger mains, like the 12-inch main, we can ice pick it and run less water down there and get it cleaner. We had good luck with it on 3A, but, you know, we'll, we'll have to deal without that. Unless they, they could flip it off and sell it to another company that would be doing a smaller company or something to that effect. Sean wants to buy one.
No, I just pointed to Tony.
Italian times, I, Tony and Sean.
Yes.
The guys from Georgia that don't like the cold weather.
If you buy it, you call it Italian ice.
Ooh.
Let's wrap this thing up.
Okay, so looking at the numbers, the actuals in 19 were 4.47 million dollars, and this year's budget was 5.2 million dollars. And then this year's budget is 5.38 million dollars, which is a 2.62% increase. A lot of that increase is in capital. Oh no. How was that not higher? Debt service looks.
It's about $700,000, very minimal.
Not from this year's budget, though.
For fiscal 19 actuals, fiscal 21 budget, it's about 700,000.
I know, but look at, look at budget of 22 this year. It's up 50,000. That must be right.
It's the debt service, isn't it?
With the principal going up so much. So, so yeah, it's only a 2% increase over the budget of this year. Anybody see any big ticket?
What's the intergup for mental cost?
That's the town of Marshfield Water Home.
Wow.
Doing much better since the pressure reducing valves went in and the meters were replaced.
But we're, we're projecting a 10% increase on this budget?
That's where it is right now, because we didn't, we didn't have the two pressure reducing valves in and working it.
Okay.
And they're not at full capacity yet. We still have to go over with the fire department and get everything dialed in correctly because we don't want to put too much of a pressure reduction valve and then have a, something happen with a fire. But there are rate increases. The reason for the 10% is because Marshfield had been raising their rates.
So you presume that we have the same volume at the higher rate? So we'll beat those numbers.
Well, this year they changed their rates to not on valve usage, they cut on base rate. They put it based rate up by 5%. So it didn't matter what we used, we still kept it at 5%.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're in the nice numbers.
Great. And the revenue side on the 5.3 million dollars is identical. So 5.38 million in revenue, which is a $150,000 increase from last, from the budget. Are we running on track with the budget?
Yes, I'm just terrified. And we're, we're in keeping with last year, we're a smidge behind, but overall the dollar value's more, just a smidge behind is actual as budget.
Okay. And this is with the rates going up as well at 15%, is that?
15.2. So at this time, at the end of December, we had collected 2.7 million, and last year we had collected 2.4 million. Overall, we're up.
Okay, and the retained earnings is just under a million dollars, actually minus 200 from the fall of 19 special town meeting, so about 800,000, and then there's 300,000 in the budget for this upcoming year, which brings the retainer down to $500,000. All right, well, clearly we have a lot of work to do in that department. People are feeling it in their, their rates. I mean, everyone's water bills, the five of us included is going up considerably, but there's not really much we, we can do at this point, so.
Could you give one quick update, if you don't mind? It's just about the, the surface water treatment plant. Recent weeks, we've been very challenging regarding our aging treatment plant. We've been working on a couple of larger scale projects, but have also experienced several mechanical failures. We're really getting to a point, almost to a point where we're day-to-day at the plant. Not trying to throw up any huge red flags, we're getting by, we're making it. As Kevin would call it, kind of a heightened alert, not an emergency, but we're seeing more and more mechanical problems. And I, I kind of reference it as, or refer it to as, all of us, at some point in our lives, have had a vehicle and we've kept it too long, kept it to the, you know, to the point where it starts to break down. And when it starts to break down, and it usually ends up more, spends more time in the shop than you use it driving around. We're really starting to feel that at the treatment plant. I just want to express that, just so that, I know there's going to be a big update from Ty and Bond about how they assess the plant and what they recommend, but just wanted to give you my viewpoint on it, because I've been up there a lot, a lot today. I was up there. And recent weeks, I've been spending more and more time up there trying to duct tape and keep things, keep things going.
Great, well, we appreciate that, and, you know, clearly we're aware of it, and we're, we're getting plans together, and a plan together towards, you know, a large-scale improvement, so. When was that built, in the 60s?
Originally in the 60s and then a modification in the 80s.
91, or 89, 91, 89, 91.
Are we gonna have a, a public session on, you know, here for the water?
The report.
Is that the next, the report is at the next meeting?
A lot of reporters on the floor.
Okay.
Yes, the next meeting we'll have it, so, you know, obviously a public meeting, it'll be on TV and everything else.
Great, anything else for Sean?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Both of you guys, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
You know, keep up the good work, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Covering everything, right?
That's the last budget of this evening.
Great night. Thank you.
All right, so we already did the cell fish, and we, the next is new business, and we have some drain layer licenses. Renew some existing licenses. Do you have that on the screen?
Uh, yeah.
Add some motion.
Move to approve drain layers license for Pergerski Corporation.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Is that a, is that a new one?
That's a new one.
Yeah.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Does anyone abstain?
No, I just. No, it's fine. No, just, don't contact vessel, forget it, it's fine. Nope, nope, it's all right. I've never heard of him, where's he from, what's he?
Canton.
Uh, you should have Kevin's stuff.
Sorry.
Just log on, take your chance, take your time.
Yeah, we could, we have renewals, you want to do that first?
Yeah.
Okay. So I retract my motion.
One, two, three.
Well, we haven't voted, so we don't need to.
Oh, okay. So move to renew.
I get it, I have it up now.
Move to approve a renewal of drain layer license to the following businesses. Mankwitz Contract, Contracting, Dandal Construction, Springle Excavating, McErnann Contracting, Roberts Burrito, Topman's Enterprise, and Paul J. Legel?
Legel.
Legel. Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
The next one is the new one, which is.
Why don't we go to the one, go to the one-day?
One-day, well, okay. Uh, move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Black Apron, prevent at St. Mary's on February 1st, 2020, from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion, this is for the Citro High School Basketball Boosters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is unanimous? And now we'll go back to the new license.
Yeah, so this company's located in Canton. They've applied, they've supplied all of the normal backup material and been reviewed by Kevin?
Nope.
So someone can just come in and get a license to do one project, right?
Right.
So they may know the home builder.
Exactly, they have some type of connection. I, I've been in business 50 years, I'm sure they're, they're fine, that, that's all. And, and other people have looked it over closer than I just did, so that's fine. And they, all the insurances. Yes, and all the insurances are there, I just hadn't heard of them, that's all. Thanks.
All right, all in favor of the new license for Pergerski?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Other business, are there any liaison reports?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So the Coastal Advisory Commission is sponsoring a neighborhood visioning process over the next month, where they're, they've contracted out with a consulting firm, the same consulting firm that came in here before, to sort of talk to us about engaging the public. So as we go forward with new projects, the more the public is engaged in the process, the hope is that the greater likelihood that some of our more difficult projects will pass, right, and gain support. So between, I think it's January 30th and the month of February, they have a very short timeline, there were about 500 postcards sent out across town, I don't know if any of you received them. They're mostly along the coastline, there were some inland. I did get one, but we don't have a copy of it, I thought there'd be a copy of it in our backpack, I mean, package. But basically what they're doing, they're looking for volunteers to host neighborhood meetings, between 10 and 15 people to bring in, and the consultant will be there. It can be either a coffee or evening. I'm going to host one, you know, we're looking for some other volunteers if any want to do that, and really reach out. And really, reach out to your neighbors to come in, and, and the goal is to ask everyone within Cituate, you know, what is your vision of our coast in fifty years, like thirty to fifty years? You know, keeping in mind with all the news that we hear and what we're seeing. So just for folks to really think about it, and then they're gonna document it, and obviously present it back, and then bring it all back together with the larger master plan and visioning plan. So they are coordinating efforts, but this is really an opportunity for people to feel comfortable, just to share their thoughts, and for it to be documented. So I told them I would try to get some volunteers, so I'm gonna...
Who would somebody contact if they wanted to host one?
They can reach out to myself or Louise Fund, who is the chairperson of the Coastal Advisory Commission. So Louise, her email is also on the website. So if you want to reach out to her and volunteer your time, it's probably like an hour, you know, ninety minutes of question and answering, very casual atmosphere. So that was one thing.
I assume that these all went to the beach associations?
Yep. And the Coastal Coalition was there, Dave Ball was there, so he's reaching out to folks, so yes.
Okay, great.
So they are reaching to some of them, but looking for, you know, diversity as well in opinions, because it is a total town issue. So anybody that wants to help. And also, really trying to engage to that next generation. I mean, I think a lot of us who are in our fifties, you know, we kind of know who to reach out to. We've gotta get the thirty and forty-year-olds, and even the high, they're gonna hold a couple of sessions at the high school as well, to get the, the youth and the graduate view too, because we really need a nice broad span. So that's that. And the other thing is that the Affordable Housing Trust approved the financing of the housing production plan, and so that RFP went out and came back, and I think they approved the award of it, or supporting the award of it. So that should be starting to, where they're gonna come back in and do the analysis of where we are with regards to affordable housing.
Right?
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Along those lines, Lawson Green. Where, does anyone know where they, uh...
They're still stuck in paperwork nightmare?
Finishing up the paperwork with the state, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's getting close, but they're still wanting paperwork back in both of the states.
It's not at risk, is it, Jim?
Not at all.
Okay.
Karen?
Uh, just one from the planning board. They've received an application for a project on three A that would involve eight duplexes, which is a new thing. They don't have all of their submission work ready, so it'll be continued from this Thursday, but that's on the horizon to be reviewed from planning.
Where on three A?
It is, um...
Where?
Hold on, by Old Forge on the west side.
You go past Old Forge and right inside, you'll see the old field site, right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that big lot. So right now, the proposal is for eight duplexes and three common driveways.
Off three A.
Off three A. So that's kind of a big deal.
Yes.
And that's it.
All right. Great. The next, are there any correspondences?
Uh, just three. One is a letter, an official letter from the executive office of the Administration and Finance on the Comaloutha, Massachusetts. Just, Jim's already informed us last meeting about the two hundred thousand dollars that we received from the Community Compact Cabinet Information Technology Grant Program, which is a very, one of the largest, I think, that was awarded. So that was great work by Nancy and all of the grant writers as well. There's a legislative coffee that we're invited to, hosted by the libraries of the Old Colony Network, hosted by Senator O'Connor and Representative Moschino, will be held February twenty-first, twenty twenty, nine thirty AM, program from eight to nine at the Cohasset Fall Pratt Memorial Library. Always an interesting time to learn more about our library system. And the Sister City, City Project, the Cituate, Sister City, say that three days back, is having their next film, which is a really cool thing. It's The Quiet Man on January twenty-second at seven o'clock at St. Mary's Parish. Ten dollar for members, or for non-members, eight dollars for members, no charge for students. And it's a really fun way to come see a little cultural film.
Great movie, too.
It is a great one. And that's it, sir.
Awesome. And next is approval of minutes.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on January seventh, twenty twenty. Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is unanimous?
Move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on January seventh, twenty twenty, since the matter that was discussed is still pending at this time. Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.